Okay, let's get started. It is November sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, time is four P M. In attendance are Director Daniels, Director Art, Director Nelson, Director Mel Packham. Director Jorgensen is joining online. Director Bankus is on her way. She just texted me she's caught in some traffic. She should be here in the next five minutes or so. And Director Loma just texted me that he's not going to be at the meeting, so. So we have hopefully five board members in attendance in person with Director Jorgensen joining online now. And then we have Superintendent Gaul here and a plethora of his team up there. Along with, we have several other people, staff from Mann, joining us too. So just a quick, I wanted to kind of share this message with you guys. I cannot believe it's already Thanksgiving and time just seems to go by really fast. And the holidays are approaching and pretty soon we are going to be at the winter break. And what I want to share before we go on this Thanksgiving break, which is going to happen in a couple of days, and I am taking the liberty, speaking for the whole board here, I just want to let you guys know all the team that's up there, that your work this year has been very much appreciated. I know that you guys are working hard, not that you didn't work hard before, but now you are working hard and I see you and I've been sometimes out to the area superintendent office to get some feedback from one of you and your rooms are always empty out there. And I talked to your secretary, the administrative assistant, they are at schools, they are at schools, which is where you should be, but thanks for all the hard work, not only you, but all the other teams from the curriculum and instruction to human resources to Deborah's team, to John's team, everybody out there for all the hard work that you guys are doing. Thank you, it's much appreciated. Yesterday evening, I was at the SAC, the Steel Elementary SAC meeting. Superintendent Gaul was out there answering questions from parents for a couple of hours, sharing his vision of central admin leaning in, closing that gap, being servant leaders, building that trust back. That's what I see with your team too, that's what you guys are doing, leaning in, helping our building admin, building that trust back and providing that support, our building leadership, and it's noticed, it's much appreciated. And when he is talking about leaning in, spending time in schools, he's just not asking you guys to do that alone, he is modeling it himself and I saw that yesterday, he didn't have to spend two hours out there, he took time, meeting with every parent out there and taking time out there. So we are changing perceptions, one school at a time, one student at a time, one teacher at a time, one staff member at a time, if necessary, but at some point in time, I think we are going to have the whole district behind what it is that we are doing. And it's just not our words that is changing the perception, it's the actions that we are doing that is going to make everyone a believer out there. And that starts with me and the board and the superintendent and each of you is doing that job. And one measurable result and that win is that number is right behind Superintendent Gaul out there, twenty-two thousand zero four six, that's the student enrollment number. And in my time working with the district, I've been there for five or six years, I have constantly heard over and over again how the eleven is a declining enrollment district, that it has been going on for decades and that it is how it has been, that it is how it will be, being always on the defensive and retreating and losing over four thousand students over the last four years, that didn't help. And it was even mentioned in the Gazette editorial over the weekend. But for the first time in as far as I can remember, we are changing that narrative and according to the data shared by Superintendent Gaul and Dr. Colicky from Education Insights, we are seven hundred and fifty-seven students above projections, fifty-nine students above last year's enrollment. We are no longer retreating, we are advancing, we are growing, adding students. While districts north of us and some of them are in the news, they are talking about closing schools, we are talking about adding students. And later this evening, we'll talk about the academic pathways with AMP, but that is providing enriching educational experiences for all our students. Along the way, do we need to make some tough decisions? Probably so, that comes with losing four thousand students, but the direction that we are going in, it is just exactly what we wanted the narrative to be at the beginning of the year. So I'm thankful, changing that mindset and culture in our district, that was one of the charges for the superintendent from one of retreat to one of confidence and belief in oneself, and that's the hardest lift and I see that happening now. So the week before Thanksgiving, my heart is filled with gratitude with, for all the work that you are doing and the difference that you are making the students' lives. So thank you for all that you are doing and I was talking to Marcella, how the board can appreciate all of you guys, there are pies out there, so healthier self, as we are having this conversation out there. Just a small token of our appreciation to what you guys are doing on a daily basis. With that, going to the business center of the agenda, the first item on the agenda today is the Mann Middle School District, the School Improvement Plan. This continues our School Improvement Plan reviews. Dr. Colicky has been sending us the school improvement plans, which we have already, some of the plans that have already come in front of the board and we listened to it as action, as non-action items, it's now on a shared folder, I know that Adams, Carver, Columbia, Fremont, Kane, there were two more schools that you sent this morning to us, I don't remember what those were. So those are the final versions, Dr. K, after all their board input and back input have all been put into it. Okay, so the board has those six schools to review going into the Thanksgiving break and at some point in time, when we return back, we have to approve those improvement plans, whether that's going to be December fourteenth or sometime in January. So as we hear Mann and some of the other schools, those plans will also, the actual use of will come in front of the board for the board to review. But right now, at least you have six plans in your email folder that you can review over Thanksgiving break. With that, I will turn it over to Superintendent Gaul.
I just want to reiterate the great news of twenty-two thousand forty-six kids, that of course is unofficial, but we're very confident in it being very close to the final number, that's what we submitted to the state. And I just want to call out three specific items that I think are contributing to that number and us reversing this idea of constantly being in retreat or decreasing enrollment district. The first is the very clear message of the board and being a no-nonsense district. I want to be clear, that doesn't mean that we don't care about all the things it takes for kids to be successful, it just means that we want to finish every sentence with, and what does that mean to improve outcomes for students? So we don't just roll around in the thought about it, we actually get stuff done and you've seen that be a constant message that we're talking about. Implementation and execution, each strategy for breakfast, lunch, and dinner. We are boots on the ground, sleeves rolled up, getting the work done, day in and day out. This is, this number is reflective of our community sensing that and getting trust back into the public entity that is the Colorado Springs School District eleven. That's number one. Number two, a specific shout-out to a decision that happened well before my arrival, which was to centralize the enrollment processes and to David Colicky and his team over in Ed Insights. It is very hard to decide to get tight on things that feel so much better when they are loose. And we will find ways to loosen that process, that they do still feel very organic at the school level, because so many people just want to walk up to a school and say, I want to go to school here, can I register? But if you look, and we can do a deep dive at a different meeting, if you look at the tightness in the groupings from first hot count or butts in seats to system count, which is where we let Power School do it, to what we submitted, the grouping is very tight. That's because the process was stronger this year and we were able to make the corrections faster, stronger, smarter, smoother, simpler, which again keeps a family invested. When a family realizes it's just one form that they need and it's one phone call to get that one form fixed, they trust and believe in the system instead of the hot potato game that could exist in some more distributed resource solutions. And the last was the decision of our team to force every school that had an open seat in it to allow for permits. We are a state of choice, we do seek and we will talk a lot about quality neighborhood schools today, we want everyone to feel like they're part of a community and normally the easiest way to do that is the neighborhood around the school. But communities can describe and prescribe themselves differently now. When somebody makes a choice for a school, that is them joining a community. When we opened that up this year and made a promise internal to our principals that said, if you get more kids, and you will hear Leah here in a minute, she got more kids, we will get you the F T Es that you need because you got more kids. And so that trust inside the system again allows there to be more opportunity. So, and we will continue that process again next year. Our goal is to be well over ninety percent utilization when we get to the capacity committee as we start to advance in the next few years. We still have a lot of room to put kids in buildings at low cost, because the building's there, the air's there, the water's there. Yes, we have to add staff as we reach those staffing ratios, but it's a huge opportunity for us to continue to grow at a much lower cost than it would be if we had to add the building and the program as well at the same time. So those three things, the commitment of the board to getting after it, this idea of centralizing enrollment and us opening up seats to choice where they were available, has gotten us to not just fifty-nine more than last year. We said last year that we thought it was okay that we were going to lose eight hundred kids in the system. Anybody who's a small business owner and says, I'm going into next year with somewhere between a ten and a fifteen or, I don't want to do public math here, how much percentage that is in loss, that's a lot of kids to lose in the system. To say that I'm okay losing eight hundred kids when there's only twenty-two or twenty-three thousand, says that you think that you're going to lose. So I say it all the time, there's two ones in District eleven. So we'll be number one in enrollment, we'll be number one in growth and achievement in just a couple of years. So over to Brian to introduce Leah and Herb Mann.
Thank you Superintendent Gaul, President Mel Packham, board members, thanks for allowing us to be here tonight to present the Mann Middle School Updated One Plan. I think you guys shared a lot of great information tonight about leaning in, trust, ownership, and doing what's best for kids. So we hope that when Principal Segura dives into this, you'll hear the commitment, because not only you can hear it, but you see it from behind us tonight. So thank you all for being here. Before I turn it over to Leah, I do want you guys to know she's in her fifth year at Mann Middle School as the principal. I think that's a benefit for you to know. So thank you again for your time, Principal Segura.
Thank you for having me this evening. I do appreciate the opportunity to speak with you and share a little bit of our journey that we've had the past couple of years at Mann Middle School. I forgot I have the clicker here. So we actually at Mann Middle School decided to adopt the district mission and vision. The decision was made a couple of years ago because our staff at that time believed that we needed to be a unified front with the direction that our district was going. And so we have adopted and that's the mission and vision that we've been using for the past couple of years. As I get started today, just before I start talking about our data and where we've been, let me go back a slide here. But we've really undergone about two years of change at Mann Middle School. We've had changes in our administrative team, we've had, as you know, a large turnover in our staff last year, we had quite a few retirees, five, we had five people retire and three of those were critical positions. Those of you who had the pleasure of knowing Elaine Taravalla, my admin assistant, Roxanne Willis, and then Mark Lippincott, who was my building manager, they had all served at Mann Middle School for over twenty years. So that in and of itself, when they are, you know, bricks that keep your building and your foundation stable was a difficult loss for us as a school, but they have been gracious and have been coming back and they are serving as mentors for my new staff, which has, you know, been a godsend for us. And so with our student population, our student population has changed significantly over the past couple of years. We've had a significant increase in the number of students with special needs. Those of you who have looked at Mann's data, you know that right now we're sitting at just over seventeen percent of our students have I E Ps. If you look at our special populations as a whole, to include gifted and talented and ELL students on five oh fours, we're at about twenty-two percent of our students qualify under a special populations category. So our needs is definitely high in our building. And I think one of the things that I, that was a real takeaway for me at the start of the school year is when we talked about leaning in, because I think over the past two years, we have had so many people in the district and within the community who have really leaned in and supported us. Particularly this year, we started the school year without, we had nine vacancies when we started the school year. And so as you know, when you're getting brand-new kids in, you're trying to get people trained in new positions, you have a brand-new staff, it's a challenge. And I think there was a couple of times when Superintendent Gaul was talking about the leaning in process and we kind of giggled to ourselves because it felt like sometimes you were just leaning over that hole and people were walking over your back with metal cleats. But, you know, we're, we're still standing and we are, we have a really strong team as you can tell by the people who are here. I, I think I shared with Superintendent Gaul at one point earlier this year, I said, I will take the chaos that we have right now in exchange for the team and the culture that we are building at Mann, because I really feel like we made some excellent hires this year. It feels like a new building to walk through our classrooms, to walk down the halls. Yesterday, I walked into the eighth grade room and they had a celebration going on in there. Everybody's eating lunch together, our teams are together, it feels like a cohesive staff and that's something that's really been missing from our building over the past few years. So I'm excited for that, in spite of some of the challenges that we're still facing, I have hope and hope is a powerful thing. So I'll start today by going into some of our data and I think this is the part that has probably been the most difficult for me. It wasn't a surprise, but you have to own. And we had a lot of changes and it makes me emotional because those are our kids. So. I'll start with our five essentials. So as I said, we've been struggling for a few years with just becoming organized as a school, putting systems and processes in place, and I think we're finally getting to the point where we're able to do some of that. So if you look at our baseline data, we, back in twenty-twenty, we were considered not yet organized. Back in twenty-twenty-one, same thing, we had started to make some growth in areas and then this past year, we declined in several areas. So if you look at our five essentials overall, we did have a declining year in all five of our five essentials. Ambitious instruction dropped from forty-one down to thirty-two. Effective leaders dropped from thirty to twenty-seven. Collaborative teachers dropped from twenty-eight to fourteen. Involved families dropped from thirty-two to eleven and supportive environment dropped from forty-four to fifteen, which was our greatest area of drop. There were some areas of growth or some areas of stability, I guess is what I would say here. One of the things that we really prided ourselves on, and I think if you talk to any of our staff members that we've hired this year, they would attest to this, our new teachers and support that we provide for our new teachers. So that state, we were at seventy the first year, seventy-eight the second year, and seventy-two this past year. So it stays pretty strong and that we do provide a support system for our new staff members that come in. We increased in inquiry-based science, so we went from forty up to fifty-six, which is a gain of sixteen. And then in math instruction, we increased to three, fifty-four to fifty-seven. The areas that were of concern, as you know, when there's a building and there's a culture where trust is broken, it's hard to move forward. And so some of the areas that were most concerning were that we dropped in all areas of trust. One of those that I take personally is teacher principal trust. So, sorry. We had a decrease in that area of five. And so that's something that's a person, just so that you know how I'm working on it, that's a personal goal of mine, because it's, it's important to me. We can't grow as a team and we can't grow as a community if that trust, that's the foundation and we can't grow if that's not present. And so that's something that I'm working on intentionally. Student teacher trust was an area that dropped significantly, we dropped thirty-two points in that area. Teacher teacher trust dropped twenty-six points and then teacher parent trust dropped twenty-eight. And so with those four key areas having significant declines, we knew that we needed to really change how we were doing business and make some systems and processes change as well as culture. That was a big area for us there. So we, as we were establishing our major improvement strategies this year, one of those is our major improvement strategy number two, which is building partnerships, building community and really helping to build that culture within our staff. And then of course, our major improvement strategy number one is focusing on academic growth and achievement, which hits some of these other areas. And then major improvement strategy number three, because we have had some significant changes in our student population, really focusing on our MTSS process and that we have systems and procedures in place to catch all of our kids who are struggling. And I guess let me ask how you want to do this, do you want me to stop after each section and allow questions? Do you want questions at the end? What would be best?
Well, let's go through your package.
Okay, perfect.
And that way we don't interrupt you and then at the end we can ask questions. So just a quick note to the audience, Director Loma is also joining us online, he is apparently out of town, so he requested link and he is now joining us online. So we have five board members in person in attendance and Director Jorgensen and Director Loma joining us virtually. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you. So looking at some of our historic data for benchmarks, at the end of last school year, we were still using the Galileo Benchmark Tool. And if you look at our language arts scores, we finished out at the end of the year, we had an increase of four percent of our students from fall to winter and we finished at fifty-four percent of our students who are meeting or exceeding growth on our language arts benchmarks on Galileo. Looking at math, we had a decrease of one, we went from forty-two to forty-one percent who were meeting and exceeding by the end of the year. And math is probably the area of greatest concern right now for us at Mann.
Let me change the slide. All right, because this is on my, you know.
No, my other printer wasn't. What does that mean? It's the same one.
Oh, it is, okay.
Yes. And I'll address our math, what we're doing to address math here in a couple of, when we get to our action steps. But as you can see, when we go over to our STAR data for this year, I'm sorry, this one was math. So here is math. When you go over here to our STAR data and look at where we started, our STAR data aligns most closely with where our performance was for our CMAAS scores this past year. If you look at our language arts scores at the beginning of the year, sorry, I think I put these on the deck, no, I did, I flipped them around, so I'm sorry. This one here is math. As I said, this is our area of most concern. We had twelve percent of our students in sixth grade that were at grade level, we have eight percent in seventh grade and were as low as three percent in eighth grade at the start of the year at our benchmark data. And if you look over at our Litters.
I think that slide has both.
Has both, okay, there we go.
Both reading and math on.
I think the clicker is not working for you.
All right, so then if you look at our language arts scores in blue, that's what threw me off here, okay. So we're at twenty-two percent in sixth grade, thirty-two percent in seventh grade, and then thirty percent at eighth grade. When you look at the comparison of our scores that came in last spring for CMAAS, they're very closely aligned. So overall, overall as a school in language arts, we are at about twenty-eight percent of our students who performed at grade level or exceeded. Some of the notable gaps that we've been looking at, between our minority students and our non-minority students, we have about twenty-four percent of our minority students that are meeting or exceeding and thirty-two percent of our non-minorities. So there's still about an eight percent gap there. There's a noticeable gap between our female student performances and our male. Females are at thirty-four percent, males are at twenty-three. And most significant is between I E P students and non-I E P. We had zero percent of our students with I E Ps that were at grade level or exceeded and out of those with non, we were at thirty-two percent. And then this one is not, historically, this is not a surprise, but our gifted students performed at seventy-two percent and our non-identified gifted were at twenty-four percent. So a significant gap between those two groups. Again, that one is not typically as much of a surprise, I don't think, in most schools. We did not have data for our ELL populations, all of our students last year that we had that were tested were NEP, so they did not test, new to country. If you look at our math data.
Go back to the ELL, so they tested to, out of the program, they tested into the program.
So if you are within one year of being new to the country as a, as a native or a non-native speaker, you're exempt from the language arts test, not from math.
Thank you.
Yes. So in math, we came in at ten percent proficient on CMAAS. Okay, so we did not have scores the prior year for sixth grade. In seventh grade, we decreased from thirteen percent down to seven percent. And in eighth grade, we didn't have scores from the twenty-twenty-one school year, they came in at fifteen percent. A couple of bright spots that we do have is that there was no gap between our minority students and our non-minority students. Minority students produced at ten percent and our non-minorities were at eleven, so very close in their performance level there. And when you look at our demographics, we're pretty close to equal between Hispanic and white students. We do have a few other smaller populations that blend into our minority groups, but those are our two major population groups within there. And we are starting to close the gap in math between our female students and our male students. Female students were at eight percent and our male students were at twelve percent, so slightly higher on male percent. Again, we still have gaps between I E P and non-I E P, our students with I E Ps were at two percent and our non-I E Ps were at eleven percent. And then again, between gifted and non-gifted, fifty-five percent and six percent. So we do still have a couple of areas of gaps that we need to continue working on and addressing. I do want to point out that with our math scores, these are based on eighty-eight percent of students, or eighty-eight students in our school. So just where it fell with the CMAAS scores, we had eighty-eight students that counted as our growth score, so which is about twenty-two percent of our population. I would anticipate though, however, if that sampling was larger, that we would still see similar results based on what we're seeing with current performance level with STAR. When you look at our school performance framework this year, the one bright spot we did have is that we were very intentional about making sure all of our students participated so that we could have an accurate sampling of our students through the assessments. We were pretty close to ninety-eight percent of participation in all areas of CMAAS, which was an increase. When I took over at Mann back in twenty-eighteen, that was one of the areas on our school performance framework that dropped us a performance level in the year prior. Our participation rates were below ninety-five percent significantly, we had quite a bit of opt-outs, our students who didn't participate. So in the years that I've been at Mann, we've been very intentional in working with our families and emphasizing the importance and how we use the data and clearing up misconceptions, because I think there's still a lot of misconceptions out there about how we as schools and as districts use our assessment. We were a performance school and so we did decrease this year. We were at fifty-five point five, which was just above performance. Again, when I took over at Mann, we were priority improvement, we moved to improvement and then we were at performance. And due to all of the changes the past few years, we've held steady at performance. If I'm being totally honest and transparent, I'm not surprised that we had a decrease. It's disheartening, it's disappointing, but it wasn't a complete surprise because we knew how much our students were struggling over the past couple of years. We did have a drop of eighteen point eight percent, so we dropped two levels and the preliminary data shows us as a priority improvement school this year. So some of the challenges that we are looking at, which has helped us with our focus on how we're developing our one plan, academic achievement is low across all groups, including our gifted learners. We were, we scored does not meet at thirty-five point four percent in academic achievement and approaching in growth, which was thirty-seven point five. And historically in my time at Mann, we've always done very well with growth. This was a year where we had a decrease in that particular area. What we noticed from the feedback that we got from our five E surveys, from our families, from talking with teachers and students, is that parent involvement and family involvement was a concern across the board. It's consistently low across multiple areas and the result of that is we tend to be reactionary instead of proactive with how we engage with our families and that's something that we're looking to change. The number of disciplinary infractions that we had last year, I don't think we were prepared for it. I think we came in with the mindset that we're all back in school and everything's going to go back to normal and it's going to be peachy and it wasn't. So we, you know, our students came in with trauma and, you know, just having to resocialize again, that was a big part of it, learning how to interact with one another. And so the number of disciplinary infractions had a big impact on us as a school, it impacted our attendance rate and you know that when students are out of school, it also impacts their performance in the classroom. So we had a decrease in number of students passing classes. So, we had a decrease in the number of students passing classes and, of course, overall, just achievement and growth. And so, we decided as a staff, those that were part of our UIP process, our ONE Plan development last spring, is that we were going to focus on high-quality Tier One instruction to engage students in our learning. We felt that that was the area where we could get our biggest bang for our buck. If students were actively engaged in high-quality learning, that decreases the amount of disciplinary infractions that you have come out of classrooms. It allows for differentiation and planning for interventions for students. And that's where we're going to see our growth within our school. And then, of course, we're also looking at building school partnerships, not only with our families, but with community partners. I know, as I said before, our central administration team has really reached out to us this year. I was really pleased that we had almost the entire board of directors in our school last year helping us celebrate our students who met their end-of-year goals. And we're looking to change it so that we can become proactive. That's really what our goal is. And so, we talk, we talk a little bit about our North Stars. I really liked when we did this in our K-12 meeting at the start of the year because it helped to bring focus. We did this with our staff as well, just to have a conversation with our teams about what drives us and what inspires us and what motivates us and what do we need to do to help our school community succeed. And I think the consensus that came out of our school building when we had these conversations is that we want all of our kids to succeed. Some of our kids come from very challenging and different backgrounds. And we know, I think everybody that's sitting in this room right here knows that education is their way out. And part of that is teaching them the importance of that and to take advantage of the opportunities that they've been given. And for me personally, this is something that's near and dear to my heart. Those of you who know me know that I have a fifth grader who is at Stratton Elementary. I am one of the parents who choices my child into District Eleven. I've been very pleased with Stratton Elementary School. It's been a great fit for her. Love partnering with Kyle and his team over there. When I started as an assistant principal at Fountainport Carson many several years ago, one of the things I took from the superintendent there who had started at the time, it was Dr. Keith Owens, he said, "If it's not good enough for my kids," he had four sons who were going through the school system there. He says, "It's not good for any, it's not good enough for anyone's kid." And so, next year, my daughter wants to be a Man Lancer. She wants to go to Man. And so, that's my North Star, is my school has to be good enough for my daughter, which means it has to be good enough for all of the kids there. And so, that's something that's a driving factor, that's near and dear to my heart. So, with, as I mentioned, we had a high staff turnover this past year. And I have almost a brand-new staff in all areas. And that might seem daunting on days, but it's actually really exciting. Like I said, the energy that's in the building, the culture shift that's there. On our Data Day on September twenty-third, I think the way we approached it is we talked about, I understand that many of you weren't there to, I guess, earn the data and the scores, everything that came along with it. But you have to know where we're coming from to know where we're going. And so, as a team, we've looked at this. We've looked at our 5E data to see where we were as a school. We've looked at our benchmark data, we've looked at our CMAS data. I think we have a great team in place that's willing to do the work to move our school forward. And so, I appreciate everything that they're doing to help us as an admin team and to support us as teachers. So, looking at our major improvement strategies, we have three. Our first one and most important is obviously our academic growth and achievement and making sure that all students reach, you know, their best and their highest learning potentials. And so, when we look at our, our goal is that we're increasing academic growth and achievement for all students through high-quality Tier One instruction. Our goal is that by the end of this school year, that at least a minimum of seventy percent of our students reach their growth goals on the STAR assessment data by the end of the year. Some of the root causes that we've experienced and that we've identified is instruction lacked rigor, alignment, and often engagement strategies. So, our students were very complacent. And as you know, when you're teaching online for a while, it's easy to just change your instructional habits. And we had to readjust to coming back to instruction in person. We did not have consistent data practices, progress monitoring, follow-up to how we were responding to our students who were struggling, and then how we were differentiating. It wasn't consistent and having solid practices. So, that's something that we're really focusing on this year. When you look at our action steps, sorry, and it's a little bit small, I apologize. So, we have looked at three implementation benchmarks that fall under best-first instruction. The first one is our professional learning for staff. We had decided last school year before the curriculum instruction team had rolled out what they were doing this year, that we were going to do a book study, the learning that sticks books, and focus on the six phases of learning to help us structure our Tier One instruction for all students. And I do have to say that the curriculum and instruction team has been, has gone above and beyond to help us at Man. They started last year with coming in and working with our teachers, looking at what the blueprints would look like and starting to discuss what the six phases would. I'd like to recognize Michael Donnelly, Paul Bungie, Phil Hutcheson, Darian Founds, Laura Lee. They have all been in our buildings since last year, helping us out. And even at the start of the school year when we were short teachers, they were in our classrooms helping us. And so, they have been instrumental in helping our success this year. So, we are, through our professional development, we've been doing a book study as a staff. And then, on Thursdays, we have embedded professional staff development for all of our teachers, where we've been working on each of the six phases. And so, our measure for that will be, of course, the completion of the Schoology course, but we're looking more at what the implementation and the impact is in the classroom. Also underneath that, we have our content PLCs, which we have been restructuring those so that they're more centered on student work. So, for example, last week in our science PLC, we took the rubric for the Claim Evidence Reasoning Strategy that we've been using with our students and doing some norming and looking at student work collaboratively together to see where the weaknesses are, where we need to work on instruction. And we'll be doing that same process with our Language Arts. And they're using the Six Trait Writing Rubric. And our social studies department is using the DBQ Rubric. And so, we're really changing the focus to look at student work and then how we're addressing it, moving forward with that. And then, our teams have, we're still in the early process with this, but our teams are starting to work with support from the content facilitators on developing common interim assessments and formative assessments so that we can do a better job of progress monitoring before we get to our winter and spring benchmarks. So, for example, and I'll talk a little bit more about this in a few moments, we've purchased days for our teachers to get together collaboratively. So, tomorrow, our math department is going to spend the day working together. They are working on some of their common assessments. We're working on getting progress monitoring in place. We're working on interventions. So, we'll have the whole team together, along with the specialized co-teachers. I know Phil and Paul are coming in to, we had some retires in math. We didn't have a full math team when the school year started. In fact, we didn't have our third math teacher in eighth grade until the quarter, the start of second quarter. So, now that we have a full team in place, we're ready to move forward and work to make some of the changes we need. We have started doing instructional learning walks. So, we have an instructional leadership team at our school. And that consists of my content chairs. So, Kristi Parr is my Language Arts Chair, Gerard Bonani is Social Studies, May Ortiz is Math. And then, Science, I have Rebecca Meth. And I have two representatives from our electives team, Lindsay Callan and Mackenzie McLuhan, Dance and Theater. And we have multiple facets going with our instructional learning walks. We are focusing right now primarily on gathering data on how we are using learning targets and success criteria and whether or not our instructions, our direct instruction guided practice, independent practice is aligned to those targets and how we're assessing it. And that aligns with the second phase of learning when we're talking about committing to learning and making sure that we're showing kids the what and the why of how to learn. And so, we are, we're just starting this process. It's a new instructional team where we're going in to observe in each other's classrooms first. And the second side of that is that they are also my CAGEN team. We're going to be a full rollout, CAGEN school next year. And so, they're observing one another on their CAGEN practices and giving each other feedback through our learning walks. And then, in second semester, after we've completed all of our staff development and staff learning on our six phases of learning, we will embed that into our learning walks so that we're gathering that data on implementation as well. And then, finally, and I think this has probably been the most, one of the most important parts for a couple of reasons, is coaching and feedback for our teachers in the classroom, making sure that they have support and that they're getting adequate feedback on their professional learning in the areas that they are wanting to work on and grow in as well. But I think the other side of that is the relationship piece and knowing what's happening in their classrooms and having them feel that we're coming in as a support and that it's really not, it's about coaching and support, it's not about evaluation. And I really love that our teachers invite us to come in and to just partner with them. And they know that they have an extra set of hands if we're able to get in there to support them. All right, for major improvement strategy number two, this is our community partnerships. We are really striving to increase our parent involvement in school. We've struggled with that for the past couple of years. I think a bright spot, well, I'll get to a bright spot in a second. So, some of the reasons for that is we haven't had consistent practices on how we engage and involve our families and invite them to be part of our school. We haven't been as consistent as we need to be with communication, especially in terms of timeliness and advanced communication. And then, lack of intentional planning to recruit volunteers, whether it's to serve on communities or volunteer within our building. And so, we have developed a plan this year to address those areas. So, two things that we have really been working hard on this semester, and I think we have the right people in place. We have recruited for our PTA to get that going again, and we've recruited for our School Accountability Committee. So, Dr. Jennifer Fatheringham is going to head up our School Accountability Committee this year. And so far, she's done a really great job of just jumping in and helping us get things going. And Mr. Courtney Purman is going to be our PTA President. He has a seventh-grade daughter at our school. And they have been diligently working to get the word out and recruit and have family members. So, we have had multiple PTSA meetings so far, and we've had a couple of SAC meetings. And I'm excited that we have a group of parents who really wants to dig in and partner with us. And they're, they want to see our school improve. And so, great people on board. We are working to do a better job of being consistent and timely with communication. And that's through a variety of avenues, whether that's newsletters, the Blackboard, Loop, our social media. Social media tends to have our highest engagement because people can get that quick response. And so, we are working on communication. We sponsor quarterly community partnership events. I'd like to thank many of the people that are in this room because you sponsored our first event this year, which was our Safe Trick or Treat. If any of you had a chance to come out to the schools that evening, we ask our central admin teams and our Board of Directors, our superintendent, community partners to sponsor a door. And we had seven hundred and ninety-one people come through the door for our Safe Trick or Treat. Our students decorate, they, we have student volunteers and staff volunteers who hand out candy. They started at Audubon for trunk-or-treat, moved over to Man, did Safe Trick or Treat there. We partnered with Edison's PTA. Edison Elementary's PTA came over to our school and helped us hand out candy. And then, Stratton Elementary had their Halloween ball after. And so, it was a great time over in the central neighborhoods during, on the twenty-first. And so, again, all of you helped, whether it's directly or indirectly, make that a successful event. Our next major event that we're planning for community is our Multicultural Night in February. And then, we do smaller-scale events such as like our fifth-grade open houses, our regular open house each of the quarters. We are really working to establish partnerships and opportunities with our feeder schools, both elementary and high school. I think one of the areas that you can see this where it's most established and most successful is through our Visual and Performing Arts programs. Last year, Laura Lee McDaniel and our Curriculum Instruction Team, Carol Gates, was very instrumental in helping us develop a Visual and Performing Arts partnership with Stratton and Edison Elementary. So, their students that are in fourth and fifth grade there can come over to Man Middle School for an extended school day and take courses in band, orchestra, theater, and dance. We saw an increase this year in the participation. Last year, we were sitting at around fifty students. We're at over a hundred this year that come over every day and take classes. The students, we, for example, our band students that come in to fifth grade, or to sixth-grade band this year, they're playing at a seventh-grade level. So, they're so far advanced just from that year of experience that they had last year. I can tell you, I was in the band room observing in second hour today. And Casey Ward, who is the band director over at Palmer, was in there working with Alfredo Mullio, who is our band director. And he was given coaching and feedback to our students alongside of him. And I know Kim Kincaid from Coronado has been over there. And so, I'm just really impressed with the way our feeder schools, both up and below, have leaned in and really just engaged. And I tell you what, we have a phenomenal electives team this year. We've got some great things going on. If any of you are free later, we've got the opening night of our play at Man tonight. Just putting in a plug. And then, let's see. And then, we're trying to increase volunteer opportunities and just get people in. We have some organizations that are partnering with us this year. New Life Church has really shown up for us, whether it's coming to help clean up around campus. Paint, they've provided snacks for our staff to help keep morale. They bring them in every month. They are helping our community liaison with resources for families in need throughout the community. We have a partnership with Peak Education, which has increased participation this year. And that's a great program for our students who are first-generation students looking for college opportunities post-secondary. If, you know, great partnership with Colorado College. We have had tutoring partnerships. We've had our ELL partnership with Colorado College. And we've had a couple of other programs that have reached out to us through Colorado College that we're looking to expand. And we've had some other community organizations that have also offered and have been expressed interest. One of those is a new partnership that's come to my attention is with Black Sabbath Motorcycle Club. They're looking to become engaged as community partners. We have had Omega Sci-Fi Fraternity within our school. And so, we're excited about opportunities moving forward with engaging community members. And then, our last school goal is focusing on our MTSS systems and protocols. As I mentioned, we've had a huge change in our student needs. And, you know, Tier One instruction impacts how our students succeed. We've had a lot of gaps and an increase of students that are required Tier Two and Tier Three support within our building. And then, not having those structured MTSS systems and interventions in place and that accountability. I think that's the main part that we really need to address is accountability for follow-up on the interventions and examining the data to see, is it working? And then, again, as I mentioned before, the behavior infractions in class impact on both attendance and passing grades. So, major improvement strategy number three, this is something that I need to give credit to my two assistant principals, Robyn Moore, who joined our team this year, and Matt Dobbins, who is in his second year as assistant principal with me. They are heading up our MTSS process. We have collaboratively established pride expectations in our building that we have in all areas, whether that's in the classroom, hallways, cafeteria, assemblies. And those are just our expectations for performance for our students. We communicate those to our students, to our families. They're visible within the building. We have assemblies multiple times throughout the year. And we reward our students through our PBIS system for meeting those expectations. We have worked really hard over the past couple of years to establish a PBIS reward system. Board of Directors, you all helped us with some of those rewards last year for our students who met those goals. We were trying a couple of new things this year that's kind of exciting. We've given each of our, I don't have my lanyard on, but each of our students have a QR code on the back of their ID. And so, student, our teachers can give them digital Lancer points so that they can spend those in our Lancer store. And so, that's something new. We're trying to get a little innovative. That's Mr. Dobbins' initiative there. And monitoring data, just being really intentional about monitoring that data for both attendance, behavior, core classes, passing grades. Systems and protocols that are in place. We're looking to increase attendance. I know that our attendance team is really intentional about monitoring. My attendance secretary, once they get to two unexcused absences, she's making contact with families. When they're at four, we're initiating the letters that are going out. Right now, we have sixty-eight families who have been contacted to request meetings, whether that's virtual, in-person, about attendance rates and to talk to them about expectations. Home visits, our attendance team has conducted twelve home visits so far to follow up with students who are chronically absent and to have conversations with families, trying to get those kids back in school. Let's see, I lost my place here. So, we have been working on a collaboratively-developed discipline matrix, and that is twofold. We identified that we needed to have consistency in our processes so that teachers know what they were responsible for and then when it was to be escalated to admin. And then, as an admin team, we're also working to streamline how we're giving discipline so that there's consistency. So that I'm So that I'm not giving a consequence for the same thing one way that Brian might give it another way. And so, we've been working to make sure that we're consistent in our practices surrounding discipline because that was a huge challenge for us last year. Professional development opportunities, I need to give a shout out to Sarah Wilson and Jesse Johnson. They came in and provided training for our staff on tier one behavior strategies that our teachers can implement and use in the classroom. And then also ideas on how they can implement tier two and tier three behavior support. Amanda Joy, who works with our central special education department, has also been working with our teachers and staff on tier three interventions for some of our higher needs students who need support in the classroom. We have increased our tutoring opportunities for all of our students. We run Power Hour five days a week. Our students, starting at seven thirty in the morning, can come in for tutoring by our teaching staff. And we are in the process of hiring community members. We have Colorado College students and some retired teaching members in our community that are interested in coming in and tutoring. And then we do Monday through Thursday after school until five PM, where our students can come in and get extra support and tutoring in areas that they need help with. And then, the last thing is making sure that we identify our student learning gaps and providing targeted intervention. We are in the beginning phases of this. We're working as a team particularly in math to learn how to use, how to progress monitor more effectively. And then how to use that data to identify the proper interventions for our students. And so, that's a huge focus of our math day tomorrow. And I know that the math team, Phil and Paul, are going to be helping us with what are the best tools? What are the best strategies that we can use? And we're going to have a solid plan moving forward after tomorrow and how we're going to implement that. Okay. Alright, what questions can I answer?
Thank you, thank you for your presentation, appreciate your candidness. I know this is not something principals want to come here and the board also providing feedback. I know it's a difficult conversation to have. And I sense the emotions in the room too, so thank you for, for your candidness and sharing the fact. And the feedback that we are providing is in the, I want you to take it in the same spirit we want to do right by our students. And that's the feedback that hopefully we can provide. That is going to help you next year not come back and be in this situation. So, quickly, could you introduce your team, who is from Mann out here, who are the, what, just quickly?
Okay, Lindsay Callen is my dance teacher. I know Kevin from when we worked at Mitchell. Robyn Moore, my assistant principal. Matt Dobbins is my other assistant principal. Leah Lang is my LTE. Christian Osborne is our DST. Kristi Parr, sixth grade, language arts. This is Amber Miller, our ELL teacher. Mark Smith is one of our community partners. I think I'm thinking of that.
Thank you, thank you all for being here to, to provide some feedback as to what's happening at Mann. With that, I will open it up for the board for some questions, and I will also wrap it up in the end. Who wants to go first?
The initials that you used, and I believe, excuse me, my voice is not right. I think it's your job, what is your job?
Yeah, me? I'm a library technology educator, and so I run the technology and books. Like anything that's on paper or on this, we take care of.
Okay, well, thank you. And I do have a question. So, with the interventions that you have from the beginning of the year, what, what can you say the state of your disciplining your classrooms is as we speak at the middle of November? Compared to the high incidence rates when kids were still having to come back and get used to being in school again and making that transition?
So, it's been interesting to see the shift in the type of disciplinary infractions that we are seeing. Last year, we were seeing very high level infractions, level three, level four, level five. Detrimental behavior was our highest area. We had over, I think we finished out the year with four hundred and ninety-six behavior incidents that were office managed. And of those, I think it was over three hundred and fifty were detrimental behavior. And so, fights, things of that type of nature, and it kept us really busy. And one of the conversations we had at the end of last year is that our teachers were, and staff and admin were focused on addressing those high level needs with our students, that some of those things that we typically would and normally accept or tolerate in a classroom, we're kind of flying under the radar. And so, that's where we're seeing the shift this year in behavior infractions. We have right now two hundred and twenty-six referrals that have been put in. And of those, a hundred and fifty of them are classroom disruption or defiance. And so, that's where we're seeing the shift in behavior. We're not seeing those high level, there's a couple of kids who we've had a few incidents with, but for the most part, it's all there. I think the interesting piece of the data there is it's mostly our male students, a hundred and seventy-three of those are male. So, that accounts for over seventy-five percent of all the infractions are there. So, we are needing to shift our support to classroom. We have made some changes within our building to help with that. Class size was a concern last year. And so, we've had a couple of vacant positions in, that are still unfilled. And we've put long-term subs in those position to decrease class sizes and make five-person teams at seventh and eighth grade. And that has truly helped. So, instead of having classes that were thirty-eight to forty, we're in a more manageable range of about thirty. Sixth grade, it's a little more challenging because we have a four-person team at sixth grade, and so their classes are still mid-thirties and higher in some cases. But, so we, so we are seeing a shift in the type of behaviors, but we still need to work again on getting the classroom piece. We're not really seeing much outside of the classroom, it's classroom.
At thirty people, at thirty students in a class, it's still really pretty big. Are we talking, I don't know, are we talking about supports to cut down on the teacher to student ratio? Whether that's people in your classroom, whether it's adding an FTE, I don't know. But you're right, and I think everyone here would agree that a smaller class size would give students the opportunity to form those personal relationships that gives them the opportunity to self-monitor. And so, the conversation, and I certainly appreciate the fact that if you don't have teachers to hire and put in the classroom, what are you going to do? You got to do the best you can do. So, is that the, the direction which you're going? Or are you, or are you looking, so are, is the direction that you're going into smaller class sizes? Or more people in the classroom? Or is the idea that we need to put in place some sort of program or some sort of intervention that makes kids understand that they need to be kind to one another? There's fancy ways to say it, but that's really what it comes down to.
All of the above.
All of the above.
So, we've been engaging in conversation with members of our PTSA and our SAC about how we can engage our parents in those conversations. Because that is a conversation that we do need support from our families with right now. Is just common things about how are you, how do you treat one another, be kind? You know, one of the, some of the conversations we've had recently is kids think it's okay to like jokingly call each other racial slurs. You know, stuff like that, and it's not acceptable. Regardless of what your ethnicity or heritage is, that's something we're trying to break. Or just what they don't deem as bullying, but don't necessarily understand the impact that they have on other kids. So, that is something that we're trying to work through our discovery classes, through some of our social emotional learning. But we do, we are brainstorming right now how to engage our parents as partners to help us combat that.
And I think bringing parents into the classroom to see how their child behaves makes a huge difference, hopefully, hopefully. The other question I had was about the participation rate for your before-school tutoring and after-school tutoring. How many kids do you typically get in after-school? Do you get ten, do you get twenty for tutoring for that extra help?
It varies. And I think Leah.
So, I'm actually, I have, she's, she's in there.
I'll say one thing, it increases as the temperatures get colder, but I'll let Leah talk over that, yes.
So, the media center is used for the Power Hour. I rarely run it, but I will, you know, monitor until the teachers who are on duty can come in and cover. But we have anywhere from fifteen to twenty students in the afternoons. Before school, I have seen upwards of about twenty students. And as Leah said, the colder we get, the more I have in the media center. But typically, they're in there for, not necessarily for help, but because they didn't have time to do their homework at home, they're in there to complete their homework. But we have about two teachers in there that help out, and then I'll just kind of roam until I leave it, whatever time I need.
Thank you, that helps, thanks, those are my questions, thank you.
Thank you, could you just go back one slide?
One slide?
Yeah, just the one slide. So, right there at the bottom, this is kind of following up on Director Bankus' question. It talks about out-of-school suspensions. What was your out-of-school suspensions for quarter one, the number?
Of the disciplinary fractions that came in, twenty-three percent of them resulted in out-of-school suspension.
So, what, what's that number? Can you give me like a number, is it hundred students that are being suspended?
Oh, no, 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 no.
Fifty students?
Hold on, I can tell you, let me do my, some, some quick math here, that's not my strength. It is. What was twenty-three percent of?
Approximately.
Yeah, we can, we can tell you what it is. But what, the one thing to note there though, is that some of those students are habitual. It's not that there's a wide variety of students, it's some of the same students over and over again. But yes, if you look, I did look at the data, I didn't look that, I don't know the number off the top of my head, but whatever twenty-three percent of two hundred and twenty-six is, is what?
That's quite a bit, that's seventy-five students or something like that.
Fifty-one, fifty-nine, eight.
Of infractions, not necessarily students.
Okay.
Because, I mean, I can think of a couple off the top of my head that they are repeat offenders. Yeah, or, or more than one day, so, yes.
Well, we can talk all about best first instruction, but if we can't have kids in the classroom to provide that best quality instruction, whether it's attendance or discipline, it's a moot point out there. So, we got to be able to get the students, the chronically absent that you were talking about, that's a significant number too, I would expect. Because one of the data slides somewhere that I saw, or the discussions that was happening at the DACA accreditation, it talked about thirty-three percent of your students were chronically absent.
Last year, yes.
Yeah, well, that, that's last year's data.
Thirty percent of the students last year, what?
Chronically absent.
Chronically absent.
Yes, seventh grade was at thirty percent, and eighth grade was at thirty-five percent last year.
Is that reflected in this year's number too, similar to last year?
No, so we're actually seeing a great increase in our attendance rate. So, right now, if you look at our current attendance rate, sixth grade is at ninety-two point two percent. Seventh grade is at ninety-one percent, and then eighth grade is at eighty-eight point eight percent. And so, we do, so with eighth grade, that is where some of our out-of-school suspensions are happening. And we have a couple of students who are in the expulsion process that are still on, that's still reflect in that data until that process is finalized. So, that, I anticipate that the eighth grade rate will increase once some of that is resolved. So, we are seeing a huge increase in attendance. And part of that has to go with the efforts of intentional phone calls, home visits, and trying to make sure that we're making contact with families.
Is that something that didn't happen last year?
Not as much because we were dealing with a lot of discipline last year, so it wasn't as intentional.
Any other questions from board members? And I will look for Director Jervensson and Director Loebert too. If they had any questions, you let me know, Marcela, go ahead. Yeah, Director Nelson.
You mentioned, sorry, I just want to find it really quick, how this, how there are goals. I just wanted to find out, sorry, I should have this ready. Is it, is it the students set their end of year growth goals or? I should have asked, come back to me. Trying to find where it was.
Director Daniels or Director Rock?
Thank you, I have a question about the staff. You said you had a whole new staff this year. Do you have a breakdown of where it's going from six, seventh, and eighth?
Where the staff members went or?
Yeah, in terms of just how many new for six, seventh, and eighth, three.
So.
Overall, yeah.
I can't.
Maybe you can provide, what has the turnover rate been over the last two or three years? Staff turnover rate, you've been there all those three years. So, compared to pre-COVID, where you are like, this, are these all brand-new staff that you have? Staff turnover, just approximately, I'm just talking about over the past three years, what your staff rate, turnover has been? And do you have any vacancies right now in any of the positions? And then Director Daniels' question.
Okay, so last year was the year that was the significant year. I, you know, you have a one or two here and there. With retirees, last year, we lost five to retirement. I had two teachers on sixth grade, so again, a four-person team, so two teachers that came back. Seventh grade, a four-person team, two teachers came back. I have a brand-new eighth-grade team. With my special ed department, we have seven teachers on our special ed team, and I think. One?
Yep.
That is new, just one is new, so that team relatively stable. Electives, I had four out of seven.
We got three.
Got three new, and one was in S or position that we added, so. So, a significant turnover. And many of the people that were there before had been there a long time. And as I've mentioned, like the turnover, it wasn't necessarily a bad thing. And you know, sometimes when you have people who have been there for a long time, it's hard to change ways and go in a new direction. And sometimes it's time to move on and grow in another area, and that's okay too. I'm really excited for the people we have. It's just, it's a different feel in the building, and they're eager to just get involved. And relationships is a big one, just some of the things I'm seeing in classrooms, it's, it, it's different, it feels good.
Yeah, I, and having sub there, I get it.
Yeah.
I get it, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. So, looking at your website for the play, which by the way, everybody happens at seven, so if we can be out of here at six forty-five, I can get your own tickets, our five dollars. Five dollars, good, because that's all I have, five dollars. So, but looking at the website and your calendar is very developed, but when I went looking for things like under families and community, the SAC isn't there, the PTA isn't there, and I don't know that I see them on the calendar, but I probably look through them. So, just for communication, I, I hope that the deal in the loop and all of that is really substantial. Because, well, I found it under about us and get involved and all of it, it, it just feels like there could be more. But again, maybe it's, it's already happening as a parent and not community.
I can address that a little bit.
Okay.
So, actually, my PTA president and my SAC chair have both asked us at a time so we can talk about communication because they would like to be involved to help with getting more information out to the parents. But Leah and Christian and I have met, and we've been talking about our website and how to make it a little more user-friendly. We've got a list of changes that we want to implement and move around. I know that they've been working on it diligently, even as much as this afternoon, trying to get information out there. Transparency on our website, and we've got our goals and our one plan up there. But, so that parents actually know what that is. And that is something that we have looked at and we are addressing.
Okay, I agree, because yeah, when we talk about community engagement and you mentioned your volunteer, or your quarterly opportunities, I'm like, where? So, I appreciate that.
And before you move on, do you have a timeline when that website will incorporate the SAC information, the PTA?
Do you have a timeline? Is it the next year? I'll move it from where it's at to where you just suggested right now.
Both, both would be great, because then you can have way as much of a chance to find it, right?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I appreciate seeing it at least. And, and this is a problem, I would say, is across the district, so it's not just. Power, our Director Bankus was asking about that. And your, your slide mentioned it's available to all students. Do you recruit for it at all? Do you say, you know what, why don't you show up the next week until you get that down?
So, it's interesting. So, some teachers are very intentional about, and some people run Power Hour in their own room. Like, like my seventh grade math teacher, she runs a group of kids in her own room that's independent of that. Where we, one of our tools that we use to get kids in there is if they're on the DNF list, they can't go to after-school events like basketball games. So, they are very eager to go to Power Hour and improve their game, their score so they can go to games. But we do ask teachers that they're welcome to assign. But many of them, if they're assigning, they do it in their own classroom versus sending them for somebody else to help because they usually want to help them with something specific.
Yeah, I can appreciate that, okay. And the, the last thing was, the fifth bullet on here is about developing the discipline matrix.
Yes.
And I have to say, isn't that something the district has already?
We do. So, the district does have a discipline matrix, and ours is based off of that. It's just specific to our pride expectations in language. There's, there are some challenges with power school and how we enter things. And so, we've built our matrix so teachers know like how and where to put it in, so that it's clear for us.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you for clarifying that, appreciate it, alright.
Thank you. On the same thread, do you send out newsletters or something to your parent community? How do you communicate with your community about expectations, attendance, any one of those kind of topics? Do you send out a newsletter?
Our grade level teams are very good about. Our grade level teams are very good about doing that weekly or bi-weekly as a school, that's an area that Brian and I have been talking about. And um we are going to be more diligent about doing that. It has been intermittent and not as consistent, that's one of those things that was inconsistent. Um when we met with the SAC and the PTA these past couple of weeks, they gave us ideas of things that parents might find valuable in our newsletters, and that's why we're working together to develop a consistent newsletter that goes out. Um so that parents have all the information at their fingertips.
Okay.
So we are, we are working on it, it is not where it needs to be.
And as a previous practice that, excuse me, my voice is not good, was in place, um but with some of that turnover, they were still transitioning some of those job duties to get caught up. And so we we need to get better, and we will.
Hi, thank you. MAN is the school that I'm assigned to visit, both directors got, so I would like to be at least looped into that conversation, I would like to see a newsletter come through, and I would like to see what is happening, so that information that's happening from that level. The SAC, PTA meetings that happen on a monthly basis, okay. Um your participation in the five essential surveys, how has that been over the past month or so? Has parent participation been what you would expect them to be?
Um we're better this year than last year, so last year we didn't have enough parent participation to get a score. Um that was in spite of direct phone calls that I made, emails, asking people to do it, we just didn't have enough. Um when I looked at it this morning, we were at twenty-five percent this morning.
Okay.
And we've been sending out weekly emails, I think with this last week, we'll probably start making some phone calls and asking people. It's hard to know because sometimes I'll call and I'll say, oh, this parent will do it, and they'll be like, oh, I already did it, so you you don't know because it's anonymous who's done it, and that's but we are sending out, we have scheduled blackboards, we have texts, we have phone calls, and we've been hitting families with that.
And then parent-teacher co-conferences that happened end of October, what is your participation like?
Um I have the exact numbers here.
No, you can just give me rough numbers, was it fifty percent, eighty percent?
No, we were, it varied by grade level, so sixth grade had seventy-four of a hundred and thirty-five families come, they were at fifty-four point eight percent. Seventh grade had eighty-five out of a hundred and twenty-nine, they were at sixty-five point nine. And then our eighth grade had the lowest turnout, they had forty-seven out of a hundred and twenty-one, and they were at thirty-eight percent. So overall, as a school, we were close to fifty-seven percent participation.
That's a concern to me, that's an opportunity for parents to come and interact with the teachers directly and to get some feedback on where the students are thriving and where they may need potential help. And if you are not able to get that engagement with the parent community out there, um then that reflects in your student performance down the road. Jason, he had a question, Director Jorgensen.
Uh can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Wow, okay, perfect. You can see me. Okay. Oh, notes here.
Yes.
Curious on the ratio of male to female teachers.
We have an increase of male teachers this year, last year we had two. Um this year we have staff members or just teachers?
Uh staff is fine.
Uh let me think here, so instructionally, um we have one in sixth grade, one in seventh grade, one in eighth grade. One on electives?
Yes.
One on electives, um and then we have other staff members, our, you know, our custodial team and um but we we have a couple more this year, but it's still heavy female side.
I mean, as it is across education for a while, so. Um okay, thanks, just as a personal question, um what book study are you doing and what have you seen beneficial from it?
We're doing the Learning That Sticks book study, and that goes with the six phases of learning that our curriculum and instruction team has been rolling out. And um I think it's just really helped us to understand at a deeper level what those six phases, I don't know where the camera is. I don't know where we're at. Where the um, it's helped us to understand what the six phases are at a deeper level and to make the learning more meaningful, to tie it, so like, for example, our learning walk document was centered on learning targets, success criteria, but now we're able to connect that to the six phases of learning and where that fits in and what that looks and sounds like.
Awesome. Um last question and then I'll have a comment for you. So on creating interim assessments, I honestly feel like this is the seventh or eighth school that we've talked to in these discussions on where I've heard we're creating our interim assessment assessments. And I'm wondering if, and this isn't really a question for you, Leah, as as it is for us as a district of, you know, I remember working, getting paid to build uh these common assessments for our district when I taught. And I wonder if we don't have that capacity to discuss it down down the leader road of how do we get teachers to come in, build these interim assessments for our different big levels and, you know, some quarters or some or semesters so that we're not having every single school site reinvent their wheel on the interim assessment they want to give. Uh it just, you know, just doesn't make sense to me that we have everybody spreading spreading time-based interim assessments when we could have it in-house at the district. And then we can actually compare data across schools in a more, you know, horizontal way as well, so we can see how sixth grade math students are doing at Holmes versus sixth grade math school students at Saban, if we're all using Saban interim assessments, but that's another discussion for another day, I just a comment that we're all making these tests at these individual sites, there's time efficient way for that. And then, uh lastly, just a comment, I guess it was more of a rhetorical question, wasn't it? Lastly, just a comment on the Power Hour, uh we did that when I taught middle school, I loved it. And we would, you know, we'd pull kids out of sporting events if they're supposed to be in Power Hour on that DNF list, so I really appreciate hearing that. Um just make sure that it doesn't become a a adolescent sitting hour for some of your staff, like your like your library tech, sometimes the library is where you throw everybody out, you don't know where to put them, right? And so um appreciate what you do in the library there for for the kids and the staff in covering. Uh but features, if we're gonna be using this Power Hour, let's make sure we're actually, you know, the kids and and using it well so that we have, you know, it'd be more purposeful. Um so I appreciate hearing about that, and I hope that you are maximizing that to the best of your ability, and that sounds like a great program, I hope you.
Thank you.
You had a response to that.
Oh, I was gonna ask Tamara if you wanted to comment on the interim assessment piece at all, just briefly.
Sure, and Dana and I have been kind of um looking at each other, so I have him start off and then I can kind of jump to that, yeah.
Yeah, so we uh purchased a large other bank with ESR funds uh through Performance Matters, which is a sub-quarter of Power School to utilize common interim assessments. And that has been, I would say, you guys have been at the leading edge at the middle school level of utilizing those, so we have professional development and training happening at the school level to utilize the those um those items and build, from from the purchased item banks, to build the common interim assessment at the school level. They're not across, they're they're not identical across schools. Because the goal of using those at the school level is to make those really quick instructional changes and and really guide on a very quick cycle uh instructional decision-making at the school level. And then our bench, our district benchmark is meant to test the efficacy of those of those decisions across the district on a standardized assessment. So the items that MAN may choose would be, could be different um from Saban and so forth. But that's because it's tied directly to where they're making those, they have the autonomy to do that for the instructional decisions and needs. I would say, though, that there is a a fair, as we're developing them, there's a fair degree of overlap. Um and so I think as as we get better at using them and as we get more uh more and more, you know, engaged with the tool, then there will be some more overlap, but right now, I think I just talked to my team and we're about six hundred and eighty different CIAs across across grades.
Thank you for that context, Dr. K, that that sounds, we have a nice bank of questions and and staff could go in there and build them as they need, so that's wonderful, thank you for that.
Certainly.
And Director Jorgensen, I am in board, I would just add um uh to what uh Dr. Colicky said. That really it's the difference, right, we talked about what we have in place for our assessment strategy that Dr. Colicky has gone over, assessment for learning and assessment of learning. Um and so our STAR assessment has really been to monitor progress at key points in time. Um and then like what Dr. Colicky is talking about in terms of those common interim assessments or common formative assessments are in specific areas of learning along the way, what do we need to to um check on so that we can make adjustments to our instruction? And so that tool um is a great tool, but we also have, um so and it's needed, but we also have new curricula, right, and um or new programming resources in Eureka Math um uh uh in connection to this school, that you can also use items as common interim assessments or common formative assessments as well. So they don't have to be built, they're already built within the system to progress monitor for the directly what you're teaching. Um and so Leah didn't uh mention that, but I know from talking to um Brian, who works very closely with Leah um and Leah Sum too, that they um that we are um using um some of those resources embedded, connected to um our program resources.
For us as a clarification, it's maybe becoming a little more focused on which tools are gonna help us get the best bang for our buck, for lack of a better description. Um because there are quite a few, particularly in math, there's probably about six platforms right now that we can access. Um but with a brand-new math team, we need to really narrow our focus and get good at one.
Perfect, thank you. I'm glad that we are building those question banks and all those things, but it goes to whether our staff are using it in the classroom sometimes. We can have all these resources and if they're not using it, to make a change then adequate.
Yeah, I just wanna tie the knot between the two of those. If you don't wanna build them, you don't have to, pull them out of Eureka.
Yeah.
If you believe that your profession, your skill requires the nuance of building your own interim assessment, we have to be able to do that. But what we don't wanna do is conflate that we're spending all our time building a hyper-specific solution set for where we can't deliver basic instruction. This is the constant argument between, should we say Tuesdays is parallel lines and Wednesdays is perpendicular lines? And just say, if you're a priority improvement or turnaround school, every Tuesday is perpendicular or parallel lines and every Thursday is perpendicular lines, says that we can actually get our arms around understanding what is or what isn't happening. So I haven't had a chance to make my comments yet, and I appreciate um how hard you're working to get there. But like the beginning of school was abysmal, and it was the same amount of time that the other forty-nine-plus schools had to get ready for school, and MAN was not ready for school opening. Because MAN always wants to make everything hyper-specific and unique to MAN. And maybe the answer on the assessments is, don't be building assessments for your math teachers, just pull them out of Eureka Square. And we won't lose ground, but what we won't do is we won't get lost in the sauce of trying to figure out how can we not be ready for school opening? In the first three or four days of school, we're just not what we expect in District Eleven. And so we have to get this balance between loose and tight and understand, we, I don't need everybody to solve the same problem. If we have simple solutions, let's put them in place, and then when we're ready for a nuanced conversation, then let's have the nuanced conversation. But going straight from high school to a PhD program is not gonna get us there. This is not, and so although I appreciate the plan that we have in place, you have been the leader in this school for several years, and those, can we go back to the five essentials also?
Yes.
We're gonna switch good cop, bad cop as we do this. The staff turnover that has happened at MAN is either by design, and if it is, you need to say that. The teachers that I had two and a half years ago were not gonna get me where I needed to go, this is the A-team and we're ready to go. We can't be circling around the number of teachers that have changed out in that system and the five essentials grades that we have right now, and to only have twenty-five percent of our parents committing to taking the five essentials to think that we're positioned for success, so.
Thank you. Uh it's good, I I think all the board directors have given feedback and, okay, go ahead, finish.
Um I found it, it was bright red. Uh I just wanna get a better grasp on, and this might actually be a question for you, Dr. K. When we're saying that a minimum of seventy percent of students will meet their end-of-year growth goals in ELA and math as measured by the STAR assessment, so where does that land us? And where are those growth goals coming from? Is it the beginning of the year assessment tells us this many students are so far behind, they're, you know, a year and a half, they need a year and a half worth of growth to meet expectations, or they need two years' worth of growth to meet expectations? You know, I I'm just not really understanding that sentence there of um when we look at the previous slides with the data.
Marcelo, can you go to that slide?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you can just pick any of the slides that have data, you know.
So talk about projected growth first, David, and where is that?
So when we say seventy percent of kids are gonna meet their growth goals, where will that then land? How many kids are gonna be at meeting expectations, so?
Okay.
Do you wanna dress, do you wanna meet it?
Go ahead.
So I, and you can correct if I'm misspeaking in any place. Um so when they take the fall benchmark assessment, it measures the students, how they grow from fall to spring. And so based on where they are, they have a set number of points expectation that shows that they've made adequate growth on that assessment in that amount of time. Where that impacts this is on the growth side of the house, that doesn't necessarily mean that if seventy percent of kids make growth, that they're gonna be seventy percent proficient. It means that they're gonna grow, um which when you're in a situation like ours where you're at ten percent proficient, growth is where we're gonna get our biggest thing for our buck, we know that they're not all gonna be proficient, but we're trying to make up those gaps and make up that growth.
And I get, like.
But but the growth won't close the gap for some kids.
Not by, yeah, not by itself.
And I I don't wanna belittle growth, that is absolutely something to cheer for when we see it. Um but I just, I didn't quite understand we're saying seventy percent of growth goals, then, you know, does that project us at fifty percent of kids are gonna be at expectations, meeting expectations?
It is, yeah, that that that's a, that is a challenge, generally what we set is that so we're looking at two things, the number of students that are meeting their growth goals or expected, and then the degree to which they're growing. So if their growth goal was fifty-one, a median growth percentile of fifty-one, that's not gonna move us to where we need to be. We will continue this kind of trajectory.
Right.
If we, if we see that seventy percent of students are meeting or hitting a median growth percentile of sixty-three to sixty-five, then that starts to close that gap.
Perfect, and maybe that's what your school improvement plan should reflect what Dr. K is talking about. It's not the median growth percentile of fifty percent, but a median growth percentile of sixty. Sixty percent is that what you said?
That's that's where we've kind of extrapolated across across most of our data. At sixty to sixty-five would would close, would start to close that performance.
And then if you go back a couple of slides to your SPF.
Can I just say something really quickly on that?
Sure.
It's it's not that growth goal that that she said, I know this recently from being connected to a recent conversation that they've had for progress monitoring um their plans, and so the school has made adjustments with um area superintendent specifically on that, this is not the CMA school connected to growth medium, it's STAR.
STAR, correct.
So those end-of-year targets are actually much more rigorous um than that fiftieth mark. They're they're set individually by student to be very rigorous end-of-year goals. And for some students, that means they will, you know, depending on the amount that they need to grow, that means they will reach proficiency, for others not, but they are they are stretch goals. They are, they are much more rigorous than that fiftieth.
If you have a student who's approaching, they're gonna be more likely to hit that proficiency level than somebody who's way below.
Makes sense, okay.
Sorry.
So the reason that I pulled up the slide is, when you look at how the state evaluates a school, sixty percent of the points is tied into academic growth, and forty percent is tied into uh academic achievement. And there is potential wherever your students are, because they are going to be grouped with the same set of students throughout the state that by moving that student in academic growth, and even if they don't achieve grade level uh meet the grade level expectations, and ideally, you want kids to meet the, meet that grade level expectations. But if you are able to move a student who's at fourth grade level to sixth grade level, that's going to show up on your academic growth. Okay, that's where you have the potential to make the biggest impact over the next year and get out of this uh status that is there. And if you go back, that was just this, if you go back to your five essentials thing. That chart, when I look at that and it's all red, that's alarming to me, and I'm being honest out here, the feedback that I'm getting. It was alarming uh two years back, and it looks like you, you know, it got worse two years after. It was alarming, uh, two years back, and it looks like you, you know, it got worse two years after that. Whatever the reasons are, but it reflects to me the culture and the environment that is there in that school is not conducive for healthy student learning. That's my first takeaway when I look at that, that the culture and how is, when just about everything is unread. However, we have a supportive environment for students to learn. Whether it's effective leaders, collaborative teachers, supportive environment, student, uh, parent engagement, all those rings alarm those to me. So my final question to you is like what? You know, going to what Superintendent Gaul was talking about, you've been there. What is it that you as a leader, are you going to be doing differently this year compared to what you did the past couple of year? And maybe you can talk in specifics. What is it that you are going to be doing to earn that trust back from you to the teachers? From teacher to teacher trust, the collaborative teacher does, and also engage the community? If you can share specifically what you are going to be doing, and that's the final question I have for you.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, and to Superintendent Gaul to address your question, I was being polite, so I'll call a spade a spade. Many of our staff changes needed to happen. It was a toxic culture and not conducive to staff, not conducive to students, and it's a different place. So call a spade a spade.
Great.
Um. With that, so one of the pieces that I'm trying to be more intentional about is making time for face-to-face contact with staff. And just making sure that hearing needs and what they, what they need support with. Um, we are, we, and I say this part as a we, because the three of us are really trying hard to be in classrooms more often. Because if we're visible there for kids, that helps alleviate issues at the root level. But it also provides support for teachers so that they see that we're there if anything comes up that they need help with. Or just as an extra set of hands, that it's not, that we're not in their room to, I got you or to catch you. It's a partnership and that we're working on it together. And um, I think that's probably the number one thing is just making time to foster and establish those relationships. Um, same thing with parents. Again, communication I think is gonna be critical to re-engaging them in our community. But also that face-to-face time with parents, making phone calls, meetings, interacting. Um, even just being visible at events so that if they want a casual conversation, that we're here and present. I think it's gonna come back to relationships. Okay.
Thank you for the feedback. The one thing that I would say, I drive past Man Middle School all the time when I need to come to the district offices. And sometimes I'm there driving past your school at six and six-thirty, your parking lot is always full. I don't know what you guys are doing, whether it's community events or it's teachers working hard. It's a reflective that hopefully that work is getting done now. And it's good that you are coming and sharing these with us. It's got to translate into actions. The words that you are saying, hey, I'm going to spend more time at the classroom, engage with our staff, engage with, make phone calls to the teachers. Phone calls to the parents, all those great things, great feedback that you are providing. Hopefully that is followed with actions, so that's. And then you talked about the toxic culture that was there in your school and that that. But that comes that I'm assuming that the staff that you have now are strong and you don't have that toxic culture anymore. Can I assume that?
It is changing.
Okay.
It is changing.
Okay.
Um, we, you know, there's challenges everywhere. It's never gonna be perfect immediately, but if you come and walk through our building, it feels like a different place.
And do you anticipate at the end of this year to come out of this status priority improvement? From the work that you guys are doing?
That's our goal.
Okay.
That is our goal.
Okay. That's the expectation too.
Yeah.
So you are not here, uh, next year, so Director Loma.
I just really quick wanna follow up. Um, do you have a high English as a second language population? And I'll let you answer that first.
Not as high as you would think, um, considering our demographics.
Twelve.
So we have twelve, but how many of us are NEPs?
Um, seven are NEPs.
So that's our challenge.
And we have one coming back in January, so we'll have thirteen, and he'll also be an NEP.
So the number's not high, but they're brand new English speakers. We have a couple of that brand new to country.
So do you have the resources you need for translation as far as your newsletters that are going out, the communication to the families? Um, I know some of the schools have said that some of the apps that they use can automatically translate for them. Do you use those kinds of things?
So we have Google Translate. So like, for example, if you look at our website, our five E parent survey, the information's there in Spanish as well. And our LTE made sure that was translated. Um, we have a couple of Spanish-speaking staff members that really help us out with our families and communication. Um, my register star, our social worker and our band director are all fluent. And so they've been really instrumental with helping partner with our, um, Spanish-speaking families.
Um, just really quick, wanna circle back on that VAPA after-school program that you have. I think you said it was two elementary schools that the students come when they're done at their school to participate at Man. How does the transportation work for that? Is it parents or?
No, you guys, you guys pray for it, thank you. It was voted on, I believe, last year by the board and it's provided. So Edison students have a bus over to Man. Um, and they have somebody who rides the bus over with them. Our teachers meet them, um, bring them in. And then at the end of the day, parents do have to pick up. So Stratton has an educational assistant that comes over, um, walks the kid, Ms. Ruth still comes over.
Yeah, you have Ruth.
Yeah, Ms. Ruth comes over, she brings them over. And then at the end of the day, our VAPA teachers, two of them take the kids over. Parents have the pickup line over at Stratton so that we don't have the overlap with the Man pickup. And they pick up kids over at Stratton.
It's interesting just thinking through our AMP conversation that'll happen later, that those are schools that aren't even on the AMP for VAPA. You know, that we're doing things at schools and so just, uh, good for us to know what's going on. And just thank you to all of you for being here tonight. I went to Man, so I'm rooting for you. Um, thank you.
You had a quick question, Director Bankers.
So with a number of Spanish-speaking folks on your staff, is there a need? And one of the conversations we've had and posting has gone out. For interpreters, does Man have a need for interpreters for the district level? For, um, parent conferences and for any of the, I see the heads shaking. So yes, Man is another one. Well, let's hope we get a good pool of candidates.
And we do, we do put in requests to have support. We also have our deaf and hard of hearing program, so we put in support for our, um, deaf and hard, our ASL interpreters as well.
How many deaf and, um, how many, how many students do you attend Man that would need services for interpretation for either deaf or blind?
Um, right now we have three that use interpreters, plus we have one parent that when she comes in, she lets us know ahead of time she needs an interpreter as well.
Is she certified as well? Or it's just home, yeah?
It's just home.
And so she only deals with her child?
No, she's deaf. So her child, her child is a hearing child, but she is deaf.
Oh, she's, I'm sorry.
So she lets us know and we make sure that she's accommodated when she.
Oh, I see what you're saying, thank you.
Yes.
Thanks.
Okay. So Director Loma wanted to ask a quick question. So we gotta keep moving, guys, uh, otherwise we are not going to be able to get all the things. What was Director Loma's question?
I'm reading the timer.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so I don't wanna pile on, and you hear what I'm saying?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, good. But, um, you know, I've been noticing, um, in every one of these, the same issues. It's not an issue of just, um, Man Middle School. Um, and and you you described, um, pretty eloquently, you were inconsistent in certain, in a sundry of areas. You mentioned communication, focusing on parent involvement, teacher, the teacher trust and establishing partnerships. And that's almost like the, um, like you cut and paste from everybody else's. Um, it's very common, I hear that. And and so I'm not trying to pile on, but I'm just pointing out what I've seen. Um, I do appreciate everything you're doing. But when you, when teacher to teacher trust is a common theme, it, I think it stands to reason why academic, uh, performance just to glide. It is, is in trouble. So I I think it's deeper than just your school. Um, and then I have one more question. You said you were, you were, um, what was it, performance, about, uh, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, correct?
Uh, let's see, when I started, we moved from priority improvement to improvement. So it would have been the nineteen-twenty school year that we moved to performance, I believe.
Okay, so my, 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 my two options, so what did, what, what did you do different? Or are you doing anything different now than you did then?
Um.
That's my question.
Okay. Well, well, one of the areas that dropped us automatically on a performance level was the ninety-five percent participation rate. So that was one that was easy to target, to overcome, was to ensure that we met our participation rates. I think what we're trying to do now is to be intentional about the interventions. Because yes, our students had learning gaps before, but they're significant now. And so we are working to make sure that they have access to grade level content, but also provide targeted interventions throughout the day that don't remove them from other classes so that they can get some of the support with spiraling the skills that they need, as well as backfilling some of those gaps. Um, like I look at, I'll, I'll give eighth grade math as an example. Um, in our advanced class, most of them are performing at the eighth grade level, whereas in years past, they would have been above that. In some areas, the data shows that they're ready for Algebra One, but not in all. Um, but then if you look at some of our other classes, like our co-taught class, in many of the skills, they're at the fifth grade level. So there's significant gaps in learning. And so for the teachers to continue to offer grade level content, we have to find other ways to backfill on some of those other skills that our kids need. Because we can't take away from class time and grade level instruction to focus on filling in three years of prior learning.
Okay. Uh, another thing I wanna make a comment, observation. Um, and I think it's a rabbit hole, because you were talking about translators and, and, and I'm very familiar with that. My mother did not speak English, and my father went to second grade. Uh, we never had a translator. Uh, we just had good teachers. So I, I think, um, although translators are great, wonderful, um, they're not, they're not an essential to a good education. But I think if you focus more on, on the things you've been discussing and, and articulating, I think you're out of success. And that's all I got, thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Director Loma.
Follow up to you, Director Loma. Um, for a side conversation later, I would like to pick up that topic and, um, and carry that conversation through. Because I don't agree that, um, translators are not important to the educational success of our kids. So let's have a side conversation outside of this.
That sounds good. Thank you so much. So you received some feedback.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Director Loma. That's a side conversation you and Director Bankers can have. The feedback that we are providing you is with like what I mentioned to you, with the spirit of improving your school. So when you are at this, um, level zero, year zero, I think that's what CD calls it. That if you don't turn it around this year, it's going to be much difficult next year. You're going to be on the clock and it's going to be a two or a three-year process for you to get out of that clock. So this is difficult work that you guys have. I appreciate all the staff that turned up for this conversation out here. And, um, uh, I'm hoping that you have the systems and supports in place. And the last thing I'll mention is that you did mention that you inherited a school that was priority improvement and you turned it around. So whether it was with the previous set of teachers that you had, you were able to turn it around even with those group of teachers from priority improvement to performance. Okay, and now you are back in priority improvement, so you can turn it around. And when you did that with the previous group of teachers. So good luck, we are cheering, rooting for you and thank you for here, thank you for being here and for the hot conversation today. Thank you.
Appreciate to be back, thank you.
Moving on, the next conversation that we are going to have is going to be about the charter schools. So we are kinda rotating the order a little bit and we are going to have, um. So this conversation came about, um, when Principal Nikki Myers, and she is out here from Academy ACL. She reached out to me, um, a couple of weeks back, and she mentioned that she would like to present a report to the board. Some of the takeaways from our current D eleven charter schools. They are be, they are part of our D eleven charter portfolio. She wanted to come and share some of the wins, as she called it, um, uh, being part of the D eleven charter. And how the supports and, uh, resources that she receives because of being a bigger part of a bigger school district, some of the highlights. And also there are some opportunities where we, as a district, can better partner with some of our existing charters in promoting them. So I think there are not only Ms. Myers here, some of the other charter school principals here too, could you introduce yourself?
My name is Catherine Siegel, I'm the principal over at Globe Charter School.
Globe?
Mm-hmm. And my name is Kate Boyce, I'm the principal at Roosevelt Charter.
Okay, anybody else? So we have three of our charter school principals here. So, um, Superintendent Gaul, I'll turn it over to you. Do you want to set up this conversation?
Uh, I just wanna thank our charter leaders for being here. We've had several engaging conversations, um, to include last week. I always appreciate when Nikki invites me over. We have some learning walks scheduled for our other D eleven authorized charters for us to start getting our area superintendents and instructional leaders to see. And get some cross-pollination of what works in one place can work in another. Um, I really wanna acknowledge Scott Mendelsberg for the work that he's done in trying to grab this part of our community together and make it part of District Eleven again. So I'll turn it over to Scott and Nikki that kinda.
The one little thing that I would add is one of the concerns that Nikki had expressed to me was that if D eleven absorbs more charters this year, other charter schools which are not part of District Eleven charters or new charters, what would the impact be financially on existing D eleven charters? And, uh, in these slides that Nikki is presenting, she has some data out there. But then Superintendent Gaul reached out to Glenn, and Glenn has been working with charters and, um, also all the financial stuff. The document that Glenn provided is also included out there. And Glenn's information is more, um, a- accurate and, um, current. So Nikki will, uh, address that as she goes.
Yeah, and just before we get into that, I mean, just the cultural shift that we're trying to make as a district. Because the traditional side is just as guilty as how other people look at it. It's never the school's dollar. It's the community's dollar that is funded to educate children. MLO comes in a different way than per pupil funding does. Adding kids to systems will dilute MLO's impact for the number of kids that currently exist in that system. Right? We think that we can do this in a smart way, that we're not hirking and jerking people around. But we want to be growing and we want to be out of decreasing enrollment averaging. Those are goals that the board has brought forward to the superintendent, myself, to be able to bring with my staff and community to deliver on. That will require us to start counting differently in how it is that we distribute those dollars. But remember, in twenty seventeen, when the MLO was adopted, it was the community's commitment to say, we want to create these slices of money for these specific purposes. Not that a school gets this amount of money and that school gets another amount of money. We have to start thinking about the future as a system and not as just a series of different schools.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then if you can, your presentation, I think the board has taken a look at your slides. So if you can possibly wrap it up in about fifteen minutes or so.
I got my timer right here.
Thank you.
Two minutes into my fifteen, here it goes. So just highlighting, you can see that yours that the different schools have started. We have all six of us have worked on this together. And one was, one of our team is recovering from surgery, and we had a couple others who couldn't be here. But all six of us have worked together collaborating collaboratively, um, with District Eleven, with Scott and with Dr. Gaul, um, to be able to do this. So we have a hundred and thirty-four years of charter schools in D eleven, which is exciting to take a look at and build on that reputation and process. These are some of the wards that we have, um, just collectively some of the highlights that we wanted to be able to note and show. And then we wanted to highlight too, just the wins of being a part of District Eleven. This is something that we all felt really strongly about as part of being on the district and is in a contrast with other charters across the whole state that we talked to in our different networks. And so part of that is the chance to be able to collaborate with the expertise that we have in the entire District Eleven system and being able to talk to different departments and make those relationships. And have that expertise be a part of all of us working together is a fantastic piece of it. Um, we appreciate those connections that we're able to make. We all know that the heart of collaboration is shared information. And so by connecting, we all have that shared information that we can build and learn from, which is great. That mutually beneficial relationship, again, is something we hear as we work with charters across the state and all different systems. Something that we have been grateful for over the years. I've had the advantage, Rainey from Siva's had the advantage being the two longest principals on here. And I've gotten to see the program go from not having opened at all and, um, getting to see from a founder all the way up through and hearing from these different systems. This has been a huge piece of that, um, that relationship process. And then two of our schools, um, have worked on new construction and being able to see that process, get to know the departments really well. So we wanted to highlight this. We know our board is familiar with this, but in community conversations, these are the things that we bump up against that tend to, um, sometimes. that tend to, um, sometimes get in the way of some of the collaborative relationships that we're trying to do. Some misunderstandings will come up. And sometimes it's District Eleven personnel coming from different groups, not having been a part of charters before or not having understanding of how charters work. And so these are things that we come across frequently that we're having to share and do. We'll have people say, well, you know, since you're not a public school. We are a public school. We have to deal with all of these different laws, rules, et cetera, that are a public school. It's public funding. We need to be accountable for that. And so that's a very important piece that we need to make sure across our whole district as we're building and, and refurbishing and making new relationships and getting to know new people, that this is very clear. We serve students with special education needs. And sometimes it'll come up, well, charters don't do that. Well, we do. And we talk with the special department here frequently, as well as having robust gifted education that we're working. Roosevelt is over there doing great work, getting their, their, um, gifted identification up for years over time. Um, to be able to identify kids in their population that historically have been under identified. And then our District Eleven charters attract and retain. We have wide geographic regions, sometimes quite often in each of our schools that we're pulling from. So our current school right now has a family that drives down every day from Florissant. We've had families from Peyton. We pull from Forten, we pull from Fountainport Carson. We pull from, um, Monument. Um, Siva has a student coming up from, I think last year they had a student graduate from Pueblo. So we pull from a huge geographic range and we think with some brainstorming, that we were even talking about this last week, we could do more with some district, um, expertise and additional brainstorming because we think we would pull more from the whole region with some of that strategizing that we're ready for the next level on. And then each of our charter schools has an independent, um, little school board that holds the contract with you as the District Eleven Board. And that's sometimes something that our community doesn't realize. We are often recruiting for board numbers, so I'll put a plug out. And there are volunteers also. And so just being able to have that. And then the waiver process gives us some flexibility. And that's where some of this innovation piece is there. This is one of the biggest strengths that we get to be able to benefit from in the intent. And I had somebody in the district, um, say to me even very recently, and it was something reflective of the misunderstanding here. And it's that charter schools originally were designed, and I sat in on a training session, there were like twenty people in the room with the original senators from Minnesota and Colorado. And they were discussing this. Charters were created to create innovation. They were supposed to be locations where we try stuff, build it, test it, see if it works, be nimble, and then contribute value back into the overall system. And so the extent to which we all have collaborative partnerships and be able to recognize that, we all get better. We learn from each other. And one of the misunderstandings, unfortunately, politics get in the way. And it becomes, it has become in many situations as a conversation about, um, who's doing it better. And all of us can speak to any one of these schools, types of schools up here. You get a traditional public, you get a charter public, you get a magnet, you get a school of innovation. It's not about any one system being any better. It is about the vision and the people and the resources and that will to get it done in that individual school. And because we live on that razor edge of little schools, we have to be very intentional. We don't have a bigger system some size if, if we're not doing it. There's a lot of spotlight, understandably and necessarily so, on whether or not we're doing it. So a lot of that accountability piece. But that nimbleness is something that we both appreciate and we have great conversations with colleagues about trying stuff out. Each of us have had traditional, um, principals come to our buildings and say, oh, that's a cool thing. I wanna take it back to my building. Or how did you do this piece? Or what if I tried that? Um, and we wanna continue that process. We wanna be able to continue to have these relationships. Um, and we all know that our kids are at stake. And so being able to, our hope in, in a lot of these conversations was that as the district is looking on bringing on more charters and also what kind of innovation can be done with traditional schools, what kind of situations are going on, how can we be having those conversations together? One of the worst situations that can happen is it becomes an us versus them, which nobody wants. Oh, these are the charters over there here. They go run their own thing. These are the traditional publics. They go do their own thing. Our kids don't benefit from that. These are all our kids and we need to be all in together, being able to have those conversations. And in many cases, we each have stories. I have a telephone on here in one of these. We have stories of traditional principals who've called us up. Hey, you got a space for this kid situation? Here's what's going on. I've toured a traditional District Eleven public, public school with one of our families and it was gonna be a much better fit and we had those conversations. So we want to have those continue, especially if we're looking at having new partners come on and have these. We need to be doing this deep collaborative conversational work and learning from each other in this process. So we were, we were looking as over time, um, at this mill levy override and it was great to have a conversation with Glenn and with Parth and get some updates on this because that dispersed effect that Dr. Gaul just mentioned is a, is very important for us. Potentially if it was just a straight, um, line item plan that was really specific in one year, if we brought in six hundred new kids, the way it landed could be potentially like a three hundred thousand dollar hit to one of our schools in one year's budget. So we were just looking at the different conversations and it was really good news to hear that, um, there's actually an allocation restructure opportunity. We just wanted to put our enrollment for you. This is right there. Some of us are down a little bit enrollment. Um, Roosevelt had a housing structure that was a huge part of her area and they took that down and now it's not as affordable for families. Um, so that makes a big difference as well. Um, the point five over there, we have some kids who attend part-time. So that's half a student right over there, um, that we do that. So. Um, this whole.
Can you go back just to the slide in front of that? The, um, allocation with the money that's there and.
Yes. Yes.
Talk about that a little bit.
Yeah, so this one right here, and this is from the June twenty-two, um, mill levy override plan. And Glenn has sent a different way to take a look at that. So that's something that's in that board file. Sorry, I've got a flag up here.
We'll get to that a little later. We'll circle back.
Okay. So the information in there, Glenn has updated that. So Glenn's file would be more accurate. So we pulled that up and had that conversation out there.
It's a great chart. I love the way that he laid it out. It was really helpful. This is one of been the most, this has been one of the most interesting things for me as a founder watching over time. When we first opened, there was a joint meeting with multiple dis, um, organizations working together and the whole conversation was about niche. And do charters fill a niche in a particular district? And if you're a charter and you wanna get approved, you should fill a niche. Over time, probably six, seven, eight years in, Chris and I were having conversations about this. Some of the dialogue across the whole state began to just be about competition. Well, just go for it. Just compete. You can do it better. That hurts us as current leaders because it also doesn't make sense. Just because something, in, in one of the questions, I remember talking to a prospective charter school and I said, why are you duplicating work? And she said, well, why not? I said, as a founder, it is a huge amount of work. It is personal sacrifice. It is time to put the work in and be able to build a program from the ground up and it is intense. And if we already have a district program that's in there and somebody could come along and provide us expertise, we already have mechanisms in place, we could take a new look at it, why would you start over from scratch? Has been part of our conversation. So I am relieved to hear, and we were having this conversation, all six of us, that some of the conversation coming back to niche has been super important. I'm a District Eleven taxpayer, right? I have District Eleven kids myself. I've got a graduate. I've got a current student right now. We wanna know that all of us in District Eleven are collectively, very carefully shepherding and paying attention to this. So where new programs are coming on, it really makes sense and it fills a portfolio need and we can put those resources in and we're not dispersing efforts as well. Um, was a big part of what we were having conversations with. The other piece of this is this, um, this need that we fully support and we can speak to if you ever need talking points on this, the need for this board to very intentionally vet programs. We know of situations across the state. We know of situations locally of programs that sound good. They've got great PR around bringing that application before. And when you dig in deep into what's being proposed, it's not ready. It's got some red flags. We know of some situations where schools were approved from a different organization and they failed. And the idea that has unfortunately been the rhetoric, rhetoric sometimes is just let parents vote with their feet. As a parent who has risked my student's career in a new school, it is really important that the choices that we are offering are fully vetted because parents don't know what those vetting committees know. They don't know what's behind the scenes to know that red flags are there and one of the schools with a red flag gets approved. That parent thinks that they've got an equal high-quality choice. They're voting with their kids' lives. They're not, it's not a manufacturing defect of a product I can send back, right? And so being able to support all of you in that careful work to vet and to make sure that the curtain is back on all of the different issues. And I stand before you as a charter that had that scrutiny and annually gets that scrutiny and we welcome that because it's work. And sometimes that message doesn't send out when schools get disappointed that they got waived. Or it becomes, you know, we put this work in and we didn't get approved, but it is so critical for our kids everywhere that we have these high-quality options that are the ones that get approved. Um, so we, we have some of the benefits here. There's my phone call. Um, we call colleagues and that's one of the benefits too. It's just being able to call and work with teammates, whether they're in traditional schools or in the charter group. And then being able to be this, this collaboration is so important. We do feel like there are opportunities for building these following things, continuing trust building. That helps when we don't have conversations about us versus them. Unfortunately, sometimes things will come up in a big district like this and in other places, will charter schools take our kids? Or that specialized program takes our kids. All of these kids are District Eleven kids. Each one of our kids are District Eleven students. Each one of the traditional, I feel committed to helping all of my colleagues when we collaborate in traditional schools as well. And we need to have that collective ownership. And in some places it's really strong and in some places we have opportunity to grow those conversations. Um, being able to, and the, and the schedules, being able to plan. So, um, having those teamwork opportunities cultivated. And then, as I mentioned earlier, we think there's some marketing ideas and communication that we have an opportunity for. And then this idea of cooperition. If you've ever seen a robotics team perform and compete, you need to come out. You need to go see the first robotics program at the Quagmire. You need to come see the best robotics program. Um, but this idea of cooperition, those robotics team, boy, they wanna win against each other. When they're on the field, those bots are going at it. When they're back in the pit, every team is working together to figure out what just went wrong with one team's robot. They are fully collaborating behind the scenes to help everybody get it done. Tears, laughter, borrow this tool, how can I help you? And then on the court, they are competing and having fun with it. We wanna be able to continue that cooperition piece. And then our hopes as we work forward is just that we can continue to have these new conversations. We can celebrate entrepreneurial spirit from all of these schools. Um, I think one of the, the biggest sometimes misunderstandings too is we've had friends and colleagues and different people who have done schools of innovation, really that can function as a district-run charter school in a lot of ways. And so that waiver process can really be a good conversation in schools. Sometimes, um, traditional principals and colleagues of mine will say, yes, I can't do that because, um, because master agreement or because some of these other things are in place and I don't have the freedom to do that. That's where I think in the larger system, we could have some conversations about where could waivers benefit in a given situation. And you schools that are interested in that too, we're happy to lend. Hey, this is what it's like to be a charter school. Here's some ideas. If you're trying to do some flexibility in your school, here's some pitfalls. We have tried some of this stuff here that might work for you differently. Here's some ideas, right? And so being able to also know if we've got any new charters coming on, part of that vetting process, are they ready to be on the team? Do they know what District Eleven stands for? It hurt me. And Chris will testify, it hurt me. One time, again, I've been doing this thirteen years there and we had a charter come up and they said, well, we don't know anything about District Eleven, but we're here to get approved. And, and they couldn't speak to the district vision and mission. We can talk about it right here. And this phrase right here, this District Eleven mission, uh, vision statement is up right here because we feel committed to that with the current team. So we just ask current teammates coming on, fully aware of that, and they wanna do that collaboration. We think there's opportunities for storytelling for all of us. I can list things going on at all six of our schools. I can list things going on at all six West Side community schools, um, over there, the traditional schools, because we're having those conversations. This was something that has stuck in, in our heads as we were having conversation and it's been in mine since we opened. John Grigio was in our District Eleven for a long time. He was our first charter liaison when I came on. Um, had been doing it a lot longer than that. Um, but he talks about in times of scarcity, people tend to constrict. And we hunker down and we conserve resources. And that's actually the time when new opportunities can come available. And so that's something that we were all really thinking about as we knew that the district is talking about bringing on these new partners. What can that look like and how we can support that? So I just about got my, uh, fifteen, seventeen minutes. We have questions time here for you.
Okay. Thank you. Marcella, can you also pu- pull up that Glenn's document if you can? That was there. So at some point in time, if we need to explain that document. So far with the discussion, I'll open it up for the board. Any comments, thoughts, feedback, questions for Ms. Myers?
I handed around, uh, just, uh, board members and I had a couple extra copies gave to some community members, just the years that the charters, uh, from when they were originally authorized by District Eleven. And just to highlight, there, there's a couple of real gaps in there, which just mean that there's a swing in the way, uh, board and or community is thinking about charters. And so Nikki's, uh, sitting here is the youngest.
Yeah.
At a whopping two thousand and ten. And so that's a, that's a long time ago. That literally means that other than LSIA, which was authorized last year by District Eleven, but not prepared to open, if I do that math right, at about twelve years, that means that a kindergartner had no, a kindergartner's family had no new charter option through District Eleven to pursue in an entire K-12 career. Just to kinda think about how many years that is. It's like a whole kid born and graduated.
And McLaren is a year older than we are. And the district had just retained chartering status at that time. New McLaren was a really strong program. Felt like they weren't ready, board felt like they weren't ready to take it on and they waived them at that time. So.
Okay. Thanks.
So to that point, it doesn't mean that people haven't had a, a charter school available. It's just a D eleven charter school.
That's right. There haven't been new D eleven additions to the portfolio as we get ready to talk about AMP, where we're constantly trying to be responsive to the market. Which really is just, um, you might never need to change your school options if you feel that the options that you have are meeting the demand signal of the community. We talked in a different session that there are forty-three hundred, as of last year's count, forty-three hundred and sixty-eight students in District Eleven Borders attending CSI charters. And there are, you briefed around eleven hundred, but the last number I had was twelve forty-five from last year. So it's a, almost four to one of families that have said, we believe that charters offer a quality education opportunity and will go regardless of where they are authorized. So the idea of we can just do it better than they can, and this is a very limited portfolio. If you understand, um, uh, especially a couple of the schools, um, with, uh, with East Lake and Community Prep, hi- hyper-specific in what they offer, hyper-specific. And they're just flourishing charters within the community that parents and students are succeeding.
So, um, a couple of questions I have. We know that, and, and these aren't necessarily for you Nikki, but maybe even for the district. Um, cause I would be very curious in the numbers and so, Dr. Kay, I might come back to you. Um, we know that private schools can filter children out just by defining them as who they are. And we won't serve you, we, we don't want to or we cannot. And I know from our experience that, um, not all charter schools have the capacity to serve all students, especially special education needs. And I know that you can get to some district support if you are a charter school within D eleven. But I would be curious, uh, how many students charter schools serve, whether they're our, spe- special education students serve, whether they're our district, um, students, our, our district charter schools versus CSI schools? And I don't know if we can get that information for CSI schools. Um, but also, and this is where the, Dr. Kay, you might come in. What our enrollment does, you know, we have our October first account and then what it is in November or January and how many students we are getting. It's anecdotal. So I would like to see those numbers at some point. Um, and then I have one additional.
Can you be more specific in, in that request? Are you implying that you think there's a shedding of kids after count that we're capturing kids? I mean, I've lived this at the, I authorized three schools. I authorized twelve schools and I was at war in DCPS with fifty thousand kids in charter schools. And so, uh, you know, my experience is anecdotally that there are lots of rumors and innuendo about what charters do or don't do, but that they become perturbations. But that they become perturbations or anomalies, they don't pan out. They don't pan out and the safest way to ensure against it is to put them under the same authorizer. If we put them under the same authorizer, then we can actually hold them accountable. Where if they're on an outside authorizer who may have an ulterior motive in trying to prove that the district can't do it. And only the charters can do it. We can ensure that special education students' needs are met, if that's a concern. We can ensure that we create relationships with our existing charters, that there isn't a shedding of kids after counting. And create protocols that say, because they're all District eleven kids, that it's not now the passing of the buck. And so I, I wanna, we'll get the numbers, but I wanna make sure that we all understand that if we treat. The child and the family as having multiple market options. Then we get to create the rules to ensure that they are fair and equitable for everyone. If we allow it to continue to exist within separate governance models, then people will find, no malicious intent intended. Certain schools will find ways to manipulate that to their advantage. So I wanna make sure I'm on the record that everybody understands that my vision is, is if we have them under the same authorization. Then if that actually happens Director Ot, shame on us. Shame on us uh 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 these portfolio officer or the authorizer or whoever we do that review. Cuz that's not fair to families, it's not fair to either school that has to do that. Now, I believe that the closer we are, the more we can partner into Nikki's example of. You, district schools will call you and say, I have a family that I think is a good fit for you. That should be seamless and allow families to navigate without having them be politicized, that it becomes a um uh, that you're a turnco. That you started in a charter, but you always wanted to play football at Mitchell High School. Cuz your dad played football at Mitchell High School. It ought to be great that you ought to be able to, when we get to AMP, I think I can show you all that. We can put that together into a portfolio that creates ease of navigation for families and students. Not what works for District eleven and or works for either the charter or CSI.
Sounds like you asked me for clarification and.
Yes.
Not necessarily the D eleven's charters I'm worried about. It is, it is more CSI that I am concerned about and I'm, you know, it would be, I think, educational to see data from everywhere. Cuz presumably some of our schools may be doing the same thing and if that is true, then we wanna address that. So it would be, I think, very interesting after October first. How numbers change within charters in our district and again, it is anecdotal. So when one has anecdotal information, they like to maybe see the actual data. So, yes, I'm curious about that.
Is that something Dr. Kay, that we can get for CSI charters, they are not part of us, how much they shed and like what Director Ot is talking about? If they, there are special needs kids that are dropping off and we are absorbing them, is that information that you?
Maybe, maybe we reframe it cuz I don't know if we can get to CSI, any charter transfer application has to come in front of the board. And the board, we can include that the charter transfer applications present that information.
Um, that's not what I'm actually asking, I'm asking about the number of students. So the number of students we have on October first, this isn't even CSI question, right, in a way. So we have numbers of presumably IEPs and students on October first and whether it's IEP, twice exceptional, whatever. On November first, is that number higher? And or?
For our schools.
For our schools, right, and in January, cuz that's the semester break, then we would be looking at. Is it higher and are there children who have been counseled out of their last school? And we might know, not know they were counseled out, but we would know that suddenly a child has arrived in our schools that wasn't there before. So it's a, it's basically a second student count.
Okay, so what Director Ot is asking for is the count in our schools. If the IEP count in individual school goes up, would that be accurate?
Yes.
Okay.
I think so.
At a certain point in time, maybe you can go back to one or two year, three years back because we don't have that information right now.
For this year.
What she's asking is for January, we are not at January. So maybe a year.
I wouldn't like to see it go back. Excuse me. Because last, the last couple of years have been uneven.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. So going forward, I would like to see if we can get that.
Okay, okay, sounds good. So maybe this is a data and what Director Bankus is talking about last two years because of. We don't know how the student home is being, but maybe for this year in January, if we can get the data. A second student count, so to speak, in our schools, specifically around IEP numbers.
So just, okay, so just to be clear. We're looking at IEP at count, count picture. Then the delta of IEP at January?
Maybe January.
And the intent of that question is to see if that delta is positive. In that we have picked up more students on IEPs post-count, post-October count.
I, I, yes, I think that's what I'm looking for and also just general student attendance numbers. Because just because a kid, if a child is um finds it's not the right fit, if they are. Have been challenging in school or they wanna wear their hair away and the school's like, you know, that doesn't work for us at a charter school. Cuz they have a very strict dress code or something and suddenly they're ours, which is fine, it's happened, but. That would be a question I would have too, which might be the easier number, I would think, of the two to find.
I, I, this seems like a massive undertaking, so I'd like to understand if this is the will of the board, cuz I can't.
I'm good as.
I can't oblige.
Sure. I, I'm going to come to that question, the will of the board, so if you can, first you asked for IEP numbers, now you are asking for the general student count.
I would be, I would be, this, the simple side, I wouldn't think it'd be that hard, you can certainly tell us, would be general attendance. I am, I would be curious about that. Because I think that's informative, if IEPs are not difficult to pull, I would be interested in that as well. But I think the general numbers would be sufficient.
General enrollment numbers, without going into specifics as to why that student transferred into that school.
Well, we knew that, that would be much richer information. My concern certainly again is that we know that this is anecdotal, if it's not too challenging to figure it out, I think it would be very informative.
Uh, what is it that we are getting to with those numbers? A student could be moving into the district from a different state. And a school could be getting ten students because they moved into the, that specific thing. How can you correlate that student, that school enrollment going up? To that this, these students are coming from charters?
No, I think that's fair, I think that it would probably be reflective in other numbers, which I wasn't gonna ask for.
Okay.
You know, if you look at like on average, what the change is.
Okay, go ahead.
To your point, I can't give you um necessarily that they came from a charter. We have entry codes, so we have admission codes that have public entry, no prior school record, um. Transfer from US school, transfer, you know, there's these different transfers that are broad buckets. But nothing specifically from a charter to us. I can get a m- a more, a more better. A better approximation, it's an approximation though of withdrawals. Because we do have an exit code of withdrawal to a. Uh, transfer to another El Paso County school district. Ninety percent of the time that is to CSI. So it's an approximation, but it's the other direction out of our system. I wouldn't be able to tell you without, I, I don't know of how I, how I could find out if they came from a char- from a charter into ours. And most definitely no reason why.
I think Nikki has a comment.
So as we're um thinking about that whole portfolio piece. One of the most interesting things when we first opened is there was such a large percentage of charters in the area that were core knowledge. Really specific model to the, and uniforms and, and so when we opened, everybody said, well, you have uniforms, right? No, that's not, that's not what we do, right? So being able to communicate that niche piece. One of the other conversations that came up is the idea of counseling out and how do schools welcome? There are reports that we can pull from CSI that just shows different schools are gonna vary, some schools are very special education central. Um, Sped and Roosevelt or um Roosevelt and Globe have had high percentages and you'll see some of that vary in the area. But we do hear rumors sometimes with some schools in the area sometimes that do some counseling out, we have those conversations, so. That's a piece of how we all have learned to communicate really well and I think it's something great in the vetting process to do. But it's nice to see now, we've got Military Academy, we've got other things in the area and we're not all core knowledge schools, we've got some variety, it's great to see.
So you still want to ask the board for that request? Uh, do you want me to ask that question with what Dr. Kay has provided as feedback to you, do you still want that information? Just the enrollment numbers for all the schools in District eleven. But we can't come to any conclusion whether, where they are coming from.
I think in general, I, I would be curious and it doesn't even have to be by school unless that's very easy to run, but totals. October first, January first.
Yep, perfect, okay, so just, yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, for just IEPs?
No, she said like general.
So just change in overall or from October. Decide if we need a report. Or thumbs up.
Certainly a thumbs up.
Let's let the board decide if they need this.
Is it just you have it in Power School, like you pretty much already know it? Because you're enrolling kids and then you pull it up in Power School to see what our enrollment changed from October to January? Is it kind of a report that is very easy to just run?
Yeah, yeah, that, those, those are withdrawals and, and admissions get added, get updated on a.
Very. So this is, is this a considerable amount of work for you, Dr. Kay?
Well, I, I, I want all questions to come to me at this point. I'm not comfortable with asking the enrollment office to go down a rabbit hole to sabotage a strategy. On bringing charters into the portfolio. I believe that's what's happening here and I need to hear that the board wants that report. And then I will communicate with Dr. Colicky to get that report. At this point, I'm, I don't want any more one-on-one conversations with Dr. Colick on what is and what is not available.
So, go ahead.
I need clarification, I um initially am interested in um. In a gauge in January that says, not only did we beat projections with our enrollment in the fall. But we have maintained it through first semester. Is there another agenda that I'm just not understanding that's going on here because that's I, that's what I thought.
So that's a report that should come to the board every year on what the enrollment was and what was met and if we lost kids over the course of the year. That is easily produced, what happens to those kids and where they go and why they go is information that we don't have immediately access to.
Okay, and that's what I was trying to get at is, I'm pretty sure we get an end of year number, now we're just asking for a mid-year number. And I guess I, if that's not just a ton of extra work, why not? I don't know that I need it for this charter school conversation, it would just be more for information purposes. But um, so I'm not sure, I guess, all of the extra that was being put out, I don't, I won't ask for that. But if you can run a report and let us know how we are in January, I'm, I will give a thumbs up on that.
And that's kind of where I'm at, is that it's just, to me, it's just progress monitoring, that this is where we are. You know, after first semester, can we count on the fact that we have reached that level halfway through the year? Yet we're holding those numbers and then at the end of the year, boy, now, and I don't know that I want those numbers next year because we'll have. Data for a year that says, we don't have to keep checking, we just don't need to keep checking. Um, so if it's not a big deal, I would like to see numbers in January.
But I agree with what you're saying, I do not want anybody to try and connect dots or make assumptions. That could impact the charter uh, or there are rumors out there, we're just not gonna go there.
I just think January is too soon cuz we don't get our actual official report back from the state until January. So I'm then chasing my own tail to say the actual number of which we are funded for next year is released in January. That number is what we submitted, so there will be some margin of error or kids that are lost and what do you call it, the fantasy trade?
A lead fantasy draft.
Fantasy draft.
Where more than one.
Two districts are claiming the same child based upon what school they attended to, number of days during that count window. That has to be resolved at the state level, that number comes to us in January. I think it is appropriate for the district to report back to the board at the end of the school year on then what happened thereafter. And to make and opine why we believe those trends happen. So we would be happy to obligate to that, but that would be one more report and it would be at the end of the school year. If I don't get the number until January and we're really just counting in Power School at that time. On who's come in and who's come out, we should report that then at the end of the year.
And I would withdraw um my curiosity. Because I think it is a distraction from what we're all about and that is our board priorities. This was just a, if it was easy to just push a button, get a number, I'm all for. If it's not, then it takes us away from our board priorities and what it is that we wanna accomplish and that is student success. Engaging in our community.
Can you send the thing you put in executive cabinet to Maricela, that rubric? So I just, I wanna let Dr. Colicky, just to reiterate, Dr. Bankus's comments of. The number is not just an Excel spreadsheet and a sum at the bottom. So David walked executive cabinet through and he's gonna share this with Maricela now and she'll put um a slide up here for a second. Just to show the difference and the complexity that goes in, this is why count happens in October. And we don't find out until January of how many kids are actually there, even though we constantly have kids in the building every day. But between part-time, full-time, preschool, what counts, what doesn't count, how that all becomes an FTE. And so we grouped our hands together Tuesday morning and said, until the state tells us different. We are two, twenty-two thousand and forty-six, cuz that's the FTE number. That's what generates the money that comes to the district and that's what everybody wants access to. Cuz that's what funds our staff, that's what funds our programs, that's what funds our repairs and our buildings, that's the number that matters.
Okay.
Thank you for clarifying.
So are you pulling up something?
When I listened to um, whether it was the DAC accreditation or whatever and the chart went up and they. I thought I understood it when all the columns were there, the FTE and then the preschool or whatever it was.
And so you've seen this before, that's what we're gonna share right now.
And I'm glad to see it again because I wanna know, and you just answered it. When we talk about the enrollment in our district, it is twenty-two thousand and forty-six kids.
Yep, and so the state tells us something different in January, which is what the dollar's attached to, that's the number. And so we thought about not releasing the number and I said, we need a win and I don't wanna wait eight more weeks to find out. It's forty-nine or forty-one or twenty-two.
And on the one that you're bringing up, there were other numbers, I won't confuse people with them, there were other numbers and I thought I unders-. I did understand it while somebody was talking, but this is the next day or two days later and I'm looking at it and going, okay, what number am I supposed to look at? Thank you, twenty-two thousand, forty-six kids, I can go away with that one. Thank you for nodding and smiling because you're all there with me, thank you, nobody's smiling on this side.
David, your floor.
Okay. So what, so what you're seeing is by eleven, um, the, you can think of these as the various buckets as for student count. For ways to count a student. So the first time is a full-time, a full-time student. Uh, and then the two in the middle are our part-time versions. So those are basically point fives. And then a head count, that is basically white to the eyes count, so when we talk about a back-to-school count, that is the, that is a head count. And the final one is the full-time equivalent, so that's taking into account all the part-times and all the full-time students. So the policy moving forward and Director.
Wait, go back again, cuz that's where I got messed up the last time I saw this. So the head count are the kids who are actually sitting in seats.
It's a physical, a kid physically on the campus, correct?
And yet the FTE number is six hundred kids off, which means we're not claiming the other six hundred kids that are sitting in seats?
Because some of those kids are part-time, so they're worth half, half a student, basically, and.
But if you take the numbers at the bottom for the part-time and the preschool and you add all those up and divide by two and um. Add it over, it doesn't, the numbers don't match.
That's what gives you the FTE. That's where the FTE number comes from.
And what Director Bankus is saying is that those numbers do, don't match, but that's what he has done the work. So there are students that only count part-time and we only get fifty percent funding for those students, even though they are a full student. We only get fifty percent funding for that student and that's.
Well, but if you add ninety-three, eight hundred, ninety-six, two hundred and twenty, divide by two, does it come out to six hundred?
Some students are point five eight of a student.
Pardon me?
Some students are point five eight of a student and not just point five.
Thank you.
Whi- which is kind of what it comes to, nine hundred plus two twenty is eleven hundred and eleven hundred plus ninety-three is twelve hundred. Twelve hundred divided by two is six hundred. So approximately, I'm just.
Yeah. So the head, the head, the head count is the number of students in the district but doesn't take into account the halftime funding. So that's one thousand two hundred and nine students. So one thousand two hundred and nine, basically cut in half, that's going to be our full-time equivalent, that's gonna contribute to the full-time equivalent.
So the number that Dr. Colicky has at the bottom, Director Bankus, one thousand two hundred and nine in the. In the text out there, the second thing, one thousand two hundred and nine, divide that by two, that's approximately six hundred students. Six hundred and four students.
So we are, when we talk about our enrollment, and this is where the magic number twenty-two oh four six point five comes from. Is the full-time equivalent, that's the most useful value because it takes into account the part-time funded as well as the full-time funded. And so that gives us the ability to then use that number for fiscal planning.
Perfect, and when you are saying we are fifty-nine kids. Uh, compare, fifty-nine kids over compared to last year's October count, you are comparing apples to apples, right?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, that's the F T E count from last year to F T E count to this year.
Correct.
Perfect, that's.
And so when facilities looks at this, um, we talk about utilization in the building. Is it head count, the total in head count that we're really looking at when we talk about the capacity of a building?
I'm sorry.
When facilities looks at these numbers, is it the head count that facilities looks at and when the, um.
I'll have to default to either Chris or you or on the capacity committee, Tamara, I don't know which number they use.
I, I think I will have to double check that, I'm not sure. Yeah, I, and it would be actually from your team, David, it, um, the numbers, it's a.
Yeah, which numbers are you to that report?
So we can double check with your team on that.
Okay, you can set with that.
Makes sense because if you're gonna talk about how many preschool classrooms you can have, you really have to look at your head count. Um, to say these are how many kids are in our seats.
Yeah, I think the good and the bad news is there's so much room in our schools that the preschool allocation was pretty easy. Move three adults out of a room with little tiny toilets and sinks in it and put preschool kids in here. So it was that simple, it wasn't about, I have to re-wicker six hundred kids because I'm at ninety-nine percent capacity.
Well, that's only part of the picture when we're talking about facilities and it's, um, maintenance of the building and access and doors and. You're gonna close off a hallway and heating has to be adjusted or adapted and whatever.
Yeah, and and the thing is when we come to that conversation, we can, but right now we are talking about enrollment numbers. And if we come to that facilities, you know.
Okay.
We can come back.
Yeah, can I suggest that we circle back and address, um, the funding and just. These lovely ladies are sitting here and this is not really relevant to them, it's important conversation. But maybe we could shift back to why they're here and then they could leave and we continue that conversation.
Dr. Kay, could we have this file sent to the board?
But it, thank you for providing it, um.
Okay, uh, are you talking about the Glenn's document?
Yes, so Mr. Gall, if you would like to speak to that and just clear up the confusion that there was on the, the original slide.
Um, and and so I've been having multiple dialogues with Glenn, um, and transparency, Glenn is still on contract for coaching opportunities. For the district as we move forward and so these are professional relationships with a longstanding financial steward. That the district and the community have great respect for. I'll ask Laura to talk about the specific numbers, but we brought this to Glenn and said, Glenn, help us understand when Nikki raised this to me. Last week before the slides were uploaded and said, we are a little worried about the M L O. And what is the M L O, what does it represent and how does it support the educational opportunity? For students and families within our city, who are the members that voted for the M L O? And so if, I mean, the summary is what it says is that the impact is small. Glenn thinks anything under seven hundred in a large, um, opportunity to bring in existing charters. Is manageable and wouldn't create too much chaos. Um, Laura, do you wanna talk about how those numbers run and if they run any different?
Sure, I can address this, I think what Glenn's trying to show here is that if we bring in charter school students, it impacts us all. Basically what happens is we take the total M L O, just for flat numbers. If we levy seventy-five million dollars in M L O money and we have twenty-five thousand students between charters, between district, between everybody. Every student gets three thousand dollars, that doesn't matter whether they're charter, that doesn't matter whether they're district. If our count goes up between charters and district from twenty-five thousand to thirty thousand dollars. Obviously, the dollars per pupil goes down and that is the same for charters as it is for district. I think the confusion was is that we have Pips and we've always shown the allocation of how much each PIP goes to charter schools. But that doesn't mean that's all the money that they're getting, they're getting their proportionate share of the overall levy. And he's just showing here on these examples, with no additional charter schools, charter schools enrollment would be five point nine five percent of total enrollment. You would get thirty-two, forty-four per pupil in this scenario, I mean, these numbers are not exactly, exactly accurate. Um, if charter enrollment goes up by three hundred and fifty students, the total enrollment goes up. Um, but the charter proportion goes to seven point five three, you can see that proportion per student, it goes down to thirty-two twelve. So there's a slight decrease there in the amount each charter school would get, there's a pretty big decrease in the amount the district would keep. But overall, it's totally proportional by student.
And it would be the same if our traditional students went up and our students remain the same, like that scenario two, you could.
Yep.
Add the three fifty to traditional and it would also impact the charters in the same way, so adding kids, like you said earlier.
Is expensive, but that's the work that we wanna do.
That's why we're here.
And we were just relieved to hear it wasn't a concentrated effect, that it's a dispersed effect. Um, so it wasn't a significant one-year surprise that we were all.
And I think the key thing too is that, um, as we're hopefully increasing our enrollment, hopefully you are too. And so as, as that number changes, you could compensate, you know, on scenario two. For Academy A C L fifteen thousand dollars, if three hundred and fifty charter schools or students are added. You couldn't bring in two more kids yourself and that would help compensate and bring more M L O to you, so.
Right, and since Maricela scrolled up, it's also worth noting the inflationary increases. So if we levy more, that also increases the dollar per pu, per pupil, so that offsets any increase in pupil count as well.
Which has been Glenn's recommendation that we levy the inflationary clause for the next two years based upon. The amount, I think it's upwards to eight percent that the state is.
This year, what we will propose to the board in December, um, right after Thanksgiving is a three point five percent increase. And then that eight percent that Glenn's showing, I think that might even be a little low, I believe C P I is coming in at eight point five percent that we will propose to levy next year.
Any further discussion or questions on this, uh, slide that Glenn has, do you have any thoughts? So the impact that you would have as charters, that's clearly defined in the three different, different scenarios. And it seems like it's a linear progression, it's, depending on whether you had three fifty or seven hundred, uh, one thousand fifty. And then Glenn breaks it down by the two thousand M L O and two thousand seventeen M L O in that bottom pages. So hopefully that provided some clarity.
That was great news.
Okay, um.
Thank you all for being here.
Al had a comment, so or a question, I don't know, could you put Director Loma?
Yeah, you guys there?
Yes.
Okay, I had a couple of things that were disconcerting to me. Um, first of all, um, I was, I was surprised by the open remarks. Um, if I closed my eyes, I'm rehearing, uh, the same public school rhetoric, uh, we had, uh, ten, fifteen years ago. And it was, you know, all about money, uh, kids, uh, taking money from one school to another. Um, I, I was under the impression, uh, that the charters will help declining enrollment. But that, that hurts total funding, so that should take care of itself. Uh, moreover, uh, parents have a choice, not school administrators or charter school founders. Having founded, uh, two charter schools, a private school and early childhood development. I understand the struggles of funding, uh, that Director I, uh, was alluding to and. Uh, seemed to me she was trying to create a problem to put blame on charters. One of the things I hated was after we had the count. Um, we would get all the failing public schools from the government public schools. Come to our charter school because they got kicked out of the regular window, like, but we had to deal with it. And that's just the nature of education, we should all be thinking that we, we were in it for the betterment of the children, not just your school. Uh, but what I found, when you focus on vetting, uh, then you have budgeting. Uh, they become evil allies and, and the vetting process no longer is looking for the best school. It's looking to maintain one's budget. And it's kind of ironic or almost audacious that in the current failing public school climate. Uh, anyone in public school can confidently say, we know what's best, so I, I, I'm worried about that. Um, so, uh, these are my main things that, that I'm concerned with. Uh, I think if we have a positive outlook and we start looking at the title of the school. And really start focusing on the children that live in the D L F N district, I could tell less work what schools they go to. Whether it be private, public, public charter, uh, it doesn't really matter to me. Our, our, our job is to give them the best product from all different angles and allow parents to choose. Uh, not, uh, the so-called professionals to choose for the parents. Uh, so that's my, my input, thank you.
Okay.
Can I make one more comment?
Yeah.
I just wanna say that I think it's unfortunate that certain insinuations are being made about where I am coming from and my feeling on charters. Because I know we have some fantastic charters in District eleven. And I know some of our own public, traditional schools have gotta come a long way before they properly serve our kids. We are very fortunate to have our alternative education campuses, whether they're District eleven. What we might consider traditional, but they're innovations, or charters, we're fortunate to have them. So I would appreciate that if anyone has a concern about where I am coming from, they can talk to me directly, thank you.
I just did.
Offline, Al, offline.
Okay, you can have that conversation offline and, um, thank you for the clarity that you provided. Any further questions on this topic? Uh, I don't see anything from Jason out there, so I'm going to. Thank you, thank you for coming and sharing your feedback as to what's happening. Uh, well, your charters and I wish you luck, you guys provide that niche to some of our, uh, students and community that. Uh, wanted, I'm concerned, this is another conversation that we can have at another time, which one of you is from Globe? Yeah, I'm concerned that your numbers are well below a hundred and how, uh, if that is sustainable to keep you, you know.
Well, and I would agree and that's kind of where I wanted to go as far as, I feel our charters right now are operating in a, an area of best hopes and worst fears. And we were firmly in the worst fears because I sat in this boardroom two and a half years ago. And we're told charter school children are not District eleven students and then was moved out of a building. That serviced a hundred and seventy-six kids to now service thirty-three children. So yes, we feel as charters that we were on our way being pushed out of the school. I had a conversation today that moved me a little bit more towards the best, uh, hopes in saying. We are not us against them anymore, but we are believing that you as charters serve a purpose. And we want to see, um, everybody thrive. And if that is meaning that a student from King or Audubon would be better serviced at one of our places. But that's an open conversation, that's not, we lost a student, that is, great, a student is being serviced within District eleven.
Okay, absolutely, thank you for your feedback on that and that's the intent going forward, I can speak for two and a half years back. The conversation of the time.
Not like a, but that's a feeling that has come.
What we want to ensure is that be, you being part of District eleven charter portfolio, you are part of our portfolio. That means we provide the help and the supports that you guys need to thrive and to succeed, okay? So, and some other, other options that we talked about, how can we market your schools? And Superintendent Gall is going to be talking about the academic master plan and in that he specifically is going to call about some of the charters and pathways. It's not us versus them, it's all of us together under the same umbrella, trying to do the best for our students. So I want you to understand this is a partnership that you are going to be set up for that success going forth, whether it's you or any other charter that we accept. It's going to be a high-quality charter that would come in and it's not what you express some of the concerns and fears, that's not going to happen. I, I'm sure, I'm confident that the board would ask the appropriate questions going forward, thank you.
Yeah, add something to that, I just want to acknowledge, from being in this community, there has been an us versus them. Scenario, and if we're going to truly talk about this, we really have to put it out there. And I do mean, how is it going to look, how is it going to operate, how are we going to make sure as a district? That we are on one page and one accord, because it's been here for, I've been, I say it all the time, been here for twenty years. It's been happening way before I got here, so I just wanna make sure with all of the effort of the principals coming. And all of the conversation that's happening, we have to really deal with it. Because it's, it's huge in terms of just the breach, the breakdowns and all of the chaos behind it. So putting me on record, if we're gonna go there, we're gonna go there. And I do mean look at every single part of it so that it can be dealt with, I would, I would love it if it's once and for all. I don't think it's gonna be because of the community, but I do wanna say, it is so time to get this thing resolved, it's not even funny. I always say that, that means it's not a joke, that means I'm not laughing, that means I don't like it, okay?
I do want, the, the, when the board has the invites to come to our K-12 P V days. You should know that our charter leaders are, our District eleven authorized charter leaders are there. And they are active and they are participating. So we have started to already try to heal those wounds. And create a portfolio where we are learning and sharing with each other. And it's, you know, as I still am learning the system and learning the names, I'm constantly in an elementary setting. And I was just like, boy, that was really smart and I was like, and I always stare at Nikki and I'm like, what school is she from again? And so Nikki picked up on that and she invited me out to Academy A C L for kickoff their read-a-thon for a weekend where they committed. As a, you're all the way through eighth grade, to read half a million pages as an extended community. They allowed parents and grandparents to come in as well. And we, and I did the kickoff and I appreciated for the chance to read with the students. The entire school in the auditorium celebrating the commitment to literacy to eat half a million pages in one weekend. And I immediately called Tamara and I said, we have to make learning fun again, how do we do that? And I thought about scale and I said, we could do ten million pages over a weekend or over spring break.
What excuse to sit and read a whole weekend, I mean, I remember doing that as a kid and as adults, you don't feel like you can, but.
Well, Nikki did it in a hamster ball.
I'm like, come in.
Principal Myers did it in a hamster ball, in a giant inflatable hamster ball.
Smelled like plastic all day long and it's heaven somehow.
But there are huge opportunities for us to learn from how we each seek to solve the problem. And if we believe that we're both trying to solve the problem, which our families are clearly telling us that they're selecting both for specific reasons. Then everybody wins.
And just to circle back to what you mentioned, you know, our board priorities, student success is right there at the top. And so I'll speak for myself, not the rest of the board, but I agree that it's, they're students, they're our students, they're not us versus them. So how we can partner with you is what we wanna do moving forward, or I want to do moving forward.
Thank you, yeah, I, I do feel that there is a lot of opportunity for, for partnership and, um. Just as long as we can break down those walls and talk like, talk it out.
And, and.
Me, cause I'm still.
And it's, it's good that Director Daniels shared, that's the perception in the community, that's what we are trying to break. And that's what that enrollment number says, I've heard the same conversation twenty years, we are a declining enrollment district, that shows we are not. Okay, and that's our perception that's there in the community, we can change that, we changed that and it's the same thing. If two years down the road, you come back and tell us that perception hasn't been changed, hold us accountable for that, okay? But that's what we are trying to change, the narrative that's out there that we were not responsive, we didn't do that, okay? With that, thank you guys for all being here. Yes, Director Loba, quickly.
Well, um, you know, I, I, I remember when the previous superintendent said, I wanna take, I'll take all of Globe's students. And I publicly said, the public, um, and then they, they kicked them out of the building that Tesla now uses. And I'll have to know how. I would suggest that since we have areas that we could look at a partnership to share schools so that we're not wasting a school. And that would help Globe get on their feet financially. And it would help us with the maintenance and upkeep of a building. We have them there. It's been done in other, other localities where public government schools and public charter schools have shared buildings. So I would suggest that we have a conversation about that. Thank you.
Eastlake is also looking for a building or two right now.
Okay, thank you, Director Loma. I'm sure those are conversations that can hap- happen with administration. Dr. Mendelsberg is here and he coordinates with the charters. And if at some point in time you want to return back to the board for board feedback specifically, then we can talk about it at that time. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Okay, what do you guys agree? And pass on our same regards to the three other principals who aren't here.
Thank you.
The last part of the conversation is about the academic master plan. And this is an update to the board.
I've got four minutes.
I got four minutes. Great, so as the slides are coming up...
Turn it over to...
Yeah, I'm gonna, Tamara and I will do a tag team here.
Sure.
First, I want to acknowledge, I always, I always reach back and I say thanks to Sheri because as I was interviewing and then onboarding, I was like, what's, what's the AMP again? And where do I find that? And then what's the difference between the AMP and the FMP? And does one lead the other? And what I have come to find is that the AMP is a soft version of a strategic plan for our district that has kind of sat on the shelf for a little too long, that we need to bring back and operationalize. And so what we're going to brief to you today is where we see the AMP going forward, where we started and then how we plan to get there. Go ahead, next slide. So our agenda, again, we'll cover quickly as Director Bankus told me I have four minutes to be done. You know where we've been, but we'll talk a lot about where we're headed. And we want to make some very clear connections to the pathways, the programs, and how the AMP is supposed to deliver on career and college opportunities to develop the D eleven graduate. That is what the AMP is for. The AMP isn't the way to sell the bond or to justify a new school or just to meet an enrollment need. The AMP is core to how we drive achievement first, that then will, we know will bring enrollment with it. Go ahead, next slide. Where have we been? This is work you all get credit for and even the board before you in years twenty and twenty-one. All these things that we heard that came as endearing principles, excellence in education for all students, quality neighborhood schools. We will come back to that term over and over again. It is our responsibility to provide a quality neighborhood school educational opportunity for every student, no matter where they live in our city. The community involvement was huge. I'm sorry, go back real quick. And we'll cover that as well. And that it isn't absent, it lives in existing committee and relationships. And we'll talk about that here in a second. Go ahead. That recap, quality neighborhood school defines through the D eleven graduate, their profile and the five essentials, the timeline of the next milestones. We have pathway school applications that we have our zero year for several of them right now. But we also think there's a chance to not just build up, but to also build backwards. And then this center to a quality neighborhood school is our best first instruction work. And so what we really hope that you get from this update is that we don't have seven different things going on. We have seven different things that all collapse in together and how it is that we reach those board priorities and the D eleven graduate. And so that's why it's important that we see the relationship between best first instruction, quality neighborhood schools, next slide. This is how you all collected the data and no shortage of inputs from families and communities. Very robust conversations that were held over a long period of time that produced the academic master plan, next slide. And these relationships continue even though we don't have AMP-specific conversations happening right now, capacity committee, district accountability, school accountability committees, even the budget work that's happening. Everything sits as an extension of the academic master plan. Next slide. Just a huge shout out to Debra and her team. I couldn't have been here more than thirty seconds or so. And Debra and Sheri brought me in. We have had a relationship with a marketing group who got us to tell the story of what is a pathway? How do we use this in a way to sell our story and not just tell our story? And if you look at the nuance, and these are all, these are screenshots that are live from our webpages. So these are active right now. If you look at the detail behind each kid, you will see each student. You will see that they are indicative of the pathway that they are excited to be participating in. So we didn't just take a smorgasbord of educational things and throw them back there. If you want to do, you know, STEM, you're gonna see a microscope behind you. And so this idea of really trying to sell the opportunity, and we will build depth behind these. The intent is that you will be able to double-click on one of those and get to understand where are the schools, what are the coursework that looks like? What is the next school that you will matriculate to if you seek to continue that pathway? And that's really the work that we want to talk about today. Next slide. We built this in kind of this pyramid scheme to say that everything foundational to whatever we do in District eleven is built upon quality neighborhood schools, which is best first instruction. It is not an either or. It isn't a mommy, I want to go to a quality neighborhood school or I want to go to an arts school. If you go to Columbia, if you go to Martinez, you should be guaranteed a quality neighborhood school with the specific pathway of being in an arts program. Okay? Where does that then, that goes up to the pathway? I like to lump the pathways that if Debra's team, we are much more specific in how we sell it. But for this conversation, they are STEM, they are language, they are arts, and they are experiential. So that is, how are we doing things? Montessori, what's an outdoor school? I don't want to just say that I have to have an outdoor school pathway in four parts of the city. We'll exhaust ourselves and we won't have the demand for it. So we have to be able to group things that say, Montessori families have specific needs, outdoor education families have specific needs. They're both kind of similar because they're experiential and how do we provide that? And then it's how do we get ourselves future-ready? We've been talking, I've coined this phraseology and we're happy to change it if the board doesn't like it or we'll run it through Paige and Debra's team because she's the best at turning golf things into sellable items. But I call it MT two four. Military technical two or four-year degree solution for every kid in high school. Now, that doesn't mean you're stuck in it, but we need kids on paths that know that they have something to do when they graduate. Because right now we have this twelfth-grade escalator to nowhere. You get up, you get to the top. I don't have the numbers, but I don't think that we're persisting at sixty and seventy percent of our kids to four-year college degree completion. We have to make sure that we're using CTE as a pathway to the middle class. We have to realize that two-year degrees can be options to get kids working to then extend themselves into a two plus two or a two plus two plus two. Right? We could do that. We could do two years as an associate's degree, hire you as an ESP, two more years then a UCCS or CC, and then hire you back as a full-time teacher. And then two more years to get your master's degree and be a principal in our system. That might be the right way for a kid in our system to be able to get there. Instead of, well, why don't you just do a fifth year at Boulder and graduate with a master's of education? Not all our kids have that access, so we want to create pathways that work for all our kids. And all of that to fit the D eleven graduate. That work has already been done by the board and the community and we seek to be able to fill in below it to be able to deliver on that D eleven graduate. That is what the AMP is for. So here's our timeline. We are in year one right now. We are at zero year for our pathway skills and building foundation. What does that mean? We have several elementary pathways that have been identified. They're doing that planning right now in their zero year. We're all in on best first instruction. If you're not sure of that yet, just replay the tape. We've been talking about that for a while. And then as we go into next year, we want to get vertical articulation into the pathways. We can't just say to people Columbia and Martinez and then have kids fall in love with the arts and then go, meh, I'm not really sure what's gonna happen to you for middle school. It's our obligation to create accessible and attainable pathways if we believe that the pathway meets the market demand of our families. And I think we're pretty sure about that. And then what we'll do on best first instruction is we're going from over-resourcing this year to actually making sure that we have performance evaluation against best first instruction next year. It's not just a neat idea. It's not going away. We have to make sure in year two that we hold ourselves accountable. Nobody's getting fired this year. Nobody's in trouble because they don't understand best first instruction. This is the time that we send area superintendents with their instructional coaches, with the other partners that we brought in to get everybody resourced such that in year two, we can then make sure we're delivering on that. And then in year three, we have to deliver on the full graduate profile realization. We are still, again, we start most of this pathway work with elementary schools. What does that mean for our comprehensive high schools? Do we have to think differently about them? Do we need to add to the portfolio to be able to deliver? We're not quite there yet. Our four comprehensive high schools kind of sit in isolation right now. We need to bring them together to support that realization. Right now, the number one obstacle for students to pursue advanced CTE certification and authorization is the high school schedule. We should be able to solve that. There's only four comprehensive high schools. If a kid wants to go to Lawson and work in a professional kitchen, they ought to know that they do their core courses in the morning and then they make their way to Lawson and it starts at one o'clock. Shouldn't start at one o'clock for a kid who came from Coronado and one fifteen for a kid that comes from Palmer and one thirty for a kid that comes from Dougherty. Because I can't get, and then two o'clock for a kid from Mitchell because I can't get the high schools to coordinate that says there is a CTE block available in the PM for kids that are taking advanced CTE at Lawson, at Pikes Peak State College, at UCCS, or even as internships within the community. So that's a goal that we get to in year three. So that's the general timeline. I want to pause there for just a second for any feedback. Are we on the right track? Were you expecting faster, slower? I'd love to hear from the board.
Okay. Board feedback.
There's a lot more, but I want to pause here just on the timeline. Because this is what we seek to deliver to the board over the next three years for AMP.
And I appreciate the fact that you called out the work that has been done in the past in this area. Lot of work, lot of community input has gone into what has already taken place.
Absolutely.
I'm glad that you referenced that in your...
It is one of the things that made this opportunity so attractive is that the district and the community already committed to best first instruction. You didn't have to convince people that that was the strategy. It's already here. Just had to get everybody on board and we're there now.
Okay, feedback. Any more feedback or comments or questions from the board so far, Director Daniels?
I am excited about that possibility for the common schedule amongst the high schools. Because I have four years. Why can't we get the students to move and start integrating for the things they are interested in? What they want to do. And it's been held in this space kind of like the charter thing. Like there's a whole lot of stuff happening in the atmosphere, but somehow it never seems to get clear or land or whatever. It's just good to know that we can actually move towards looking at what's best for them and get ourselves out of the way.
I will footstomp that. I will second that. I'm glad that we are able to provide that statement.
Right, we're trying to get ourselves to operate as a system instead of just a series of different schools. And one of the, and it's not in this slide deck, but student or school-based budgeting is the most critical component. The ten thousand dollars the state gives us belongs to the student. So if a student says, I want to do programming at Lawson or I want to go to Pikes Peak State College, which does cost us, right? I want to be clear. If you leave Coronado half a day, three days, Monday, Wednesday, Friday to go to Lawson or go to Pikes Peak State College, part of your ten thousand dollars goes with you to do that. The restriction right now, and this isn't Coronado specific, the school doesn't really want to let the kid go because they lose the FTE. But now we're limiting the opportunity for the student. So if anybody's old enough to remember the original Wheel of Fortune, I want kids to go shopping at the end of the round. And if you remember that, you used to shop. I'll take the sofa for two fifty. I'll take the hi-fi for a hundred dollars. Kids should be able to say, I got ten thousand dollars. I want to spend seventy-five hundred dollars at Coronado. I want twenty-five hundred dollars of training because I want to be a pipe fitter. And I'm gonna get that. I'm gonna get my certification at Pike's Peak State College. And then boom, we'll make the schedules work. It has to be modular. We have to have module ways that we look at our schedule. Right now, all the comprehensive high schools, some are quarters, some are blocks, some are trimesters. That makes an impossible Tetris game for a kid to figure out, how am I supposed to get what I want? And so what most kids do is they just default to the system that's presented in front of them. We have to present it in a way that works for them first. So that'll be good work to do.
So is that something that happens at year three?
That is year three's goal. I think we'll get to a common schedule in year two that'll give us some portability, but it'll take us some time to really get the depth in the CTE programs. We have really strong CTE programs with very low participation. Right? I want deep, deep participation. T rep, the email that went out last night, there's eight kids across the system that want to be paid to go to college to come back as teachers. That just blows my mind because every kid I see, I say, what's your favorite thing about our district? Every kid I meet says our teachers, every one of them. But we can't close that gap that says, hmm, how about you come back and be a teacher? We'll get half or all your college paid for. I keep looking over at Scott because he's my T rep expert. But we have to be able to realize that for kids. So that'll be interesting work that we do. Okay, let's go into...
Now, before you go, so I think in listening to the nuance, when you use the word system, I think for many people, myself included, that conversation has to continue in many venues so that when you, when teachers, when staff hear, systems in place, we're not talking about cookie cutter. And that's too often what systems means. So as I listen to you, and I think in terms, because my background is elementary and middle, I think about the flexibility that we have, that we've had in that if a kid is able to do sixth grade math and they're only in fourth grade, we've made allowances.
That's right.
And now you're elevating that conversation up to the CTE programs. But when people, but when some people hear systems, they don't hear those nuances. They don't hear that articulation, the two we're talking about. So I would suggest that that, that when you go into conversations and we are having that level of organizational meetings, that you stay cognizant of the fact that this is what systems mean.
That's right.
Yeah.
Well, the beauty of that is as soon as you transfer it to the student example, everybody loses the word system.
Correct.
Right? I mean, so when you bring in the Dougherty marching band to show how good our music program is at Dougherty and that those kids should be recognized, it's not a system anymore. Everybody, Parth is still, his ears, drums are still on. Bring in from that bass drum in front of him. Okay, next, next year's slide.
Just real quick, did you say that, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but did you say that next year we will start transitioning the high school schedules so that then the third year it can go?
And I have asked the high schools to come to me with their solution to making sure that kids can just get CTE and not be held back. That might not be as common as we end up, but I also don't want to take away, Sandra, to your point, Director Bankus, Dr. Director Bankus.
It doesn't mean...
To the nuance of what it means to go to one school or another.
Right.
Right? So where it is a balance, but the centerpiece is CTE, CTE has to be actionable and accessible.
And so next year, we'll really be laying that groundwork within that. Okay, thank you.
We should start to see that movement for next calendar year.
Okay, awesome.
Okay, where we're headed, other than where I just told you we were headed. I really want to thank Tamara for this because she just has such a strong background in articulating the difference between mission and vision and why one is so supportive of the other. And we thought that this would be really grounding for this conversation, especially since both Tamara and I are new to District eleven. And so this is the district mission of which everybody is fully on board. Nobody's trying to change a word or move a colon or a semicolon. But what Tamara helped us do, go ahead, next slide, is how do we take all the things we're talking about and make a vision that delivers on that? So as a community, we will build a strong portfolio of schools with learning foundations for all students, which is a quality neighborhood school, to explore interests and opportunities, which are pathways and programs, igniting engagements that that students, developing the knowledge, skills and attributes to profoundly impact the world. And so, yes, a portfolio of schools, which is the previous conversation we were having, quality neighborhood schools, which is everybody's got to meet what it means to get the basic standards to understand that our kids can be successful while delivering on some smorgasbord of options for families that will ebb and flow over time. It cannot be infinite and it cannot be limited. It has to be in a space in between. And so then to do that, these become the steps that we'll take, which is really just a different version of some of the stuff you've seen earlier. Invest in those quality neighborhood schools, get those programs and pathways clear. Make sure that we're tracking our kids. What does on time and on track to graduate mean? And what are you doing after graduation? I literally ought to be able to walk at the stage at Dougherty and hand out diplomas and have kids say, I'm an M, I'm a T, I'm a two, or I'm a four. And then I know, you're, you're good, you're good, you're good. And then I know you're, you're good, you're good, you're good. And any one of those that you want to get to a four, or you want to get to a twelve and become a PhD, come back, we'll get you the resources to get you there. So it's not a lot in life, it's just an opportunity. To be able to realize that vision of a D eleven graduate, next slide. That just is a reinforcing slide, cause we have excellent facilitation. Uh, I'm gonna let Tamara talk a little bit about the difference between programs and a pathway.
Yeah, this just at the top, um, shows again, uh, our overarching, um, idea of quality neighborhood schools, which is really the foundation. Um, and with rigorous instruction, tier one core instruction. But then what do we mean by what every school, um, offers and what every student gets in terms of developing their interests in alignment with that vision of a graduate? So you'll see the red box there says universal programs. What we're striving for, every quality neighborhood school, I'm looking at Lyman, cause he's talked to me about this as well. Um, has programs of physical education, visual, and some forms of performing arts. Doesn't mean that there can't be more on top of that, right? In terms of enrichment and other things, but that we ensure core, um, uh, programming across the board um, in connection with core tier one instruction. And then you see identified programming and pathways. So we've talked about those specialized pathways that in year two will develop what that means K-12. So you know where you're going from elementary to middle to high. That's on the right here. And right now, those four broad categories of STEM, visual and performing arts, experiential and dual language. And on the left is some of our other programming options that may be in, um, by area or our regions of the city. So everybody has access and opportunity. Um, but they're not necessarily K-12, they could be. Um, but there are other areas, um, that allow our kids to develop their interests. And I was, um, I just can't tell you how excited I am about this. I, this is like what every, oh man, like every school in, like every district strives for. Like I actually think we can do it based on the great work. I, with Superintendent Gall talking about the great work, like it was so amazing. Um, Nicole Ottmer put together all of the documents for us to go through of all the past work of the community engagement, um, and, um, and then like sitting with Sherry, um, and Brandon and, uh, our curriculum team. There's been a lot of good work that's going, that we actually can realize this for the district. And I was saying, um, as a parent, wanting these opportunities for my own, you know, my own child is, uh, that hasn't been realized for him. This is pretty, uh, this is pretty astounding. So you can see, sorry for my rant on that. But you can see on the left, um, the programming, all the different options that can be realized there, um, and by region. AP, IB, um, our gifted magnet programs, um, career and technical education. All of the, you know, some of the pieces that Superintendent Gall talked about as well.
Okay, now we'll dig in a little bit into the pathways. I'm gonna get a little mappy here on you, if I remember where I think we are, go ahead. So what is a pathway? And so a pathway isn't an elementary school that has a niche opportunity to you that gets enrollment up. A pathway is allowing kids the opportunity to pursue their passions. How broad can we get and how specific can we get? Will be a conversation and the decision for the board. The general idea of STEM, arts, experiential language has already been committed to by the board with the community. Great feedback, and although we have not necessarily realized many of them, cause they are in year zero, we are on the pathway to starting those pathways. But we seek to be able to get input from the board on how do you want us to complete that pathway? Cause what we did this year with vertical articulation through the area superintendents is we're making relationships between elementary, middle and high school. So when I finished Tara Berry's Martinez program in fifth grade and I got art stuff hanging all over my house, where's the district think I should go to school that I can continue to do that? I don't want to force that on parents. Sure, parents get to make choices, but we should have a logical pathway for a child interested in arts to continue to dabble in the arts while they still get that broadness that they're gonna need to get to be a successful middle school student. So we'll go through some of this. Clear pathways for families, quality neighborhood school, bar none is every school in the system. Fundamental aspect of all our schools, plus, I'll let you read, keep building, we like animation. I've gone over that ad nauseam already. This is the way that our team is currently divided and the way our schools are divided. We know that's not perfect. We know it's not perfect. It is the best that we could do where we are right now. And the idea is not that we treat each region singularly or in isolation. There will be specific pathways that may likely cross border, because we've seen the numbers and David could certainly support it. The number of families that permit and permit out at the high school level is almost three times as what it is at the elementary school level. Our city, as big as it feels, is no more than thirty minutes from Chapita to McCullough, even with traffic. And so when you get kids and they have cars and they have options, they will say, mom or dad, I want to go to this high school and here's why. So we'll be able to build that and support it for you, next slide. These are our current, um, pathway schools. And so we have our STEM, our visual and performing arts, our experiential. And again, just to explain that, we, we lumped in outdoor education as well as Montessori and the same, and one dual language immersion. And you can see the board and the community elected to do this in a fairly equitable way, that there would be specific pathways and opportunities in basically each part of the city, which is great. We want to know that we can meet the demand signal of our families. Now, what we want to do is make sure that we're not just doing it because they're all border areas and we're trying to have enrollment. We're doing it because we believe that these are ways that will increase in student engagement and active learning for them to become high achieving learners through the process. Okay? So now I'm gonna say, again, this is the way that we as a team envision a pathway. If you were to start in an elementary school at Montessori, that is a fairly focused light. You're there for a very specific reason to go to Buena Vista. You're not confusing yourself while you sent your kid to Montessori. As you get to middle school, there are very few examples of Montessori middle schools. But there are tons of opportunities for experiential programming available in a middle school. Project-based learning, uh, portfolio by defense, uh, uh, expanded, uh, club and, uh, other activities for kids to take the attributes and the skills that they liked in their Montessori experience and take that spotlight and widen it a little bit at the middle school. Cause again, we're never gonna be able to sustain an elementary, uh, Montessori school with a middle school for Montessori, with a high school for Montessori. We'll be creating programs until we're there. And now when we get to high school, then this idea of how diffuse does the light get? But with laser specificity. Cause we know that there are some kids who are gonna be super committed to whatever their pathway was, that they want to realize that dream. Most kids, and I'll use all my kids as an example, all three of my kids played a musical instrument. One is a musician at Washington State University. The other two couldn't carry a note if you tied it to their back anymore. They loved their instrument when they were kids and they were all about it. But as they got older, they wanted a comprehensive experience. They wanted to do the things that the average kid does in high school. But you can do that and you can get a diffuse unidirectional light and allow people to go their way through the pathway. So I just give that as a frame and now I'm gonna go through a couple of examples. So let's take the outdoor education program at Halber. We are so excited for that. The feedback we get from parents is they want it, they love it. We actually just made some modifications to make, uh, the outside area more wheelchair accessible. So thanks to Chris and Terry Seaman for that effort to be able to do that. Or maybe it's happening over Thanksgiving. I might be in front of myself. So say no snow next week. Um, but what we know is that when a child gets to high school, do we really think that the twenty-five kids in that first grade class are all still gonna be hell bent on outdoor education? No, what we believe is that twenty of them are gonna want to go to Coronado and do what normal kids do in Coronado and maybe be part of the club. But that five of them are gonna be laser specific. And we ought to be able to deliver for them an internship with the Parks Department. And maybe of those five, two or three of them become national park rangers. You know what did it? The outdoor education program at Halber. But we can't think that at Halber, that our success in a pathway is twenty-five kids start in first grade and twenty-five kids stay in outdoor and in middle school and twenty-five kids have a very specific curriculum in high school. We need to be able to meet at that high school level, both the breadth and the focus. Okay? And go ahead again. Build. So, and then here's a STEM example. And now I'm gonna introduce this idea of a portfolio strategy. STEM at McCullough, go ahead, build. We certainly named Galileo a, uh, um, uh, an arts and sci, uh, I'm sorry, math and science school. We have some program at Swigger, we can build again. And then we know that at Mitchell, we have a whole aviation science department down there that we ought to be able to build out. And we're thinking about transfer, or taking in transfer applications to Colorado Military Academy. So I can get breadth at Mitchell, but I could get hyper-focused at what they do at Colorado Military Academy. We're never gonna put kids up in airplanes on Saturdays. Somebody else is already doing that. So if you get your scratched itch at elementary school in McCullough and you're like, mom and dad, I want to fly airplanes. And they're like, oh, you're crazy, you know, we're, we're in Colorado Springs, I don't have the money to do that. No, 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 I can go and I can be a top student at Swigger to Galileo and then I want to go to the Colorado Military Academy and I'm, I'm gonna wear my uniform and I'm gonna do this and I'm gonna fly my airplanes on Saturday. That is a way that we can solve the focus of what people need in a pathway without having to then say, Brandon, congratulations, you're now on a one-year sabbatical. Build me my own airplane program, because we think we can do it better than Colorado Military Academy does. And then you're gonna come back and you're gonna have ten kids the first year and then you're gonna go to an eleventh grade, so you're gonna get a tenth grade and eleventh grade, you have thirty kids. It takes years to build even an average school. And so you saw that, that's why I handed that around. Look at the dates of when these schools started and then even the schools that have started after them. It takes a decade to build a school. So the idea in the portfolio is, why not grab them if they're there and they're already serving kids? Okay, now the next one I want to go to is, uh, arts, just to show you the way we're thinking about these. Elementary school at Columbia, you're gonna go middle school at North. And then, well, wait a second, there are other ways to fulfill arts. Part of the IB wheel is arts. So if you're super into the arts, maybe you want to challenge yourself and go to Palmer and be an IB student. Or if you're totally into the performing arts, and, uh, and then you're gonna go to SIVA. Uh, we're never gonna open up a Juilliard. And so, and, um, uh, met the, uh, the leader for SIVA when we had our offsite, um, at Academy ACL. They're doing tremendous work. Highest performing high school in a District eleven portfolio right now is SIVA. So how do we celebrate that as part of a pathway? And communicate that to parents and not say that they're leaving the district to go fulfill their child's dream. We all have children and we all know how hard those conversations are. Our job in the district is to give those options to families. Go to forward, I think, and I'm gonna get to one more. Okay, and then we can build this backwards. So the first ask is we gotta build up. We need to make some decisions about a portfolio strategy and then what does a middle school look like to get that floodlight? Is it in clubs, is it in after-school activities? Is it in some specific programming? Do we want to say Holmes is more about STEM? Or do we want to say one is about the other? That's a conversation for the board. We can build backwards. We have an IB diploma high school. We have a middle years program at North and we have no primary years program. So build that next animation for me. And so where does a student start in elementary school to be interested in IB? Now, a lot of districts don't have PYPs. They'll say, you'll figure it out when you get to middle school. But my belief is, especially when I look at the Central and having been at Steel last night and having been to Stratton and going to Taylor all the time and understanding what's happening and the performance that we have at Edison and having heard Audubon's pitch here, we have a set of parents that are very interested in IB and in PYP. So we need to decide, is that an idea? Do we want to build it backwards? Do we want to take that program and actually make a commitment that says, we believe IB, and, and Dr. Mel Pakem, I think you were at the, the Theory of Knowledge, uh, work today at Palmer, and I'll ask you to comment.
So what's that?
On the value of how it realizes the D eleven graduate, literally right in front of you.
Yep.
If you've ever hit, if you've ever heard kids do a Socratic seminar on the difference between a truth and a fact, you'll just lean back in your chair and you'll say, my work here is done. Because when kids can have that level of conversation and can, theory of knowledge is based upon that basic premise, the difference between a fact and truth, I'm sorry, I said theory, a fact and a truth, that's when you know you've realized it. Okay, next slide. I put that in there again, just to remind you that like, wouldn't it be great to double-click on one of those and see the map that says, here's a logical pathway if you're interested in arts, if you're interested in STEM? These are the options that District eleven has for you. Anybody go out to a nice meal and you don't know what wine to ask for and you just say, is there a pairing that you recommend with the special today? And ninety-nine percent of the time, we say, I'll take a class of that. Right? So we have a chance to sell our families on how to complete that dream. Next slide. Okay, I'm gonna pause there for a second. Feedback on the maps, where people want us to go and not go.
Let's leave it at that, uh, first, the one, yeah, which talked about the IB pathway. I think we had an IB program at elementary school, it was at Midland. And I can't talk to what went into choosing Midland as the, because it was before my time.
Right.
And at some point in time, the interest waned or dropped out.
Right, so, right, so let's be clear, we have to make hard decisions.
Yep.
Right now, we've sat with these priority improvement briefs. We have three programs that have in them priority turnaround, I'm not sorry, um, have gifted magnet program, priority improvement school.
Yep.
Gifted magnet program turnaround school. That's not selling anybody to be able to make that leap. And so having Midland, which is on the list, which has low enrollment, which has a waning, we can't put a primary years program to try and hook parents. It's not a hook. It's an opportunity for students to succeed.
Yep. Uh, it's got to be at the right location.
Right.
Like what you're talking about. And that's another conversation I, hopefully, your team can consider the gifted magnet schools that we are talking about and which are the ones that are identified and having gifted magnet and priority improvement, gifted magnet and turnaround. It's not the hook that is going to sell the parents to send their kids to those schools. So it's just a thought, just my personal opinion out there on that. Um, any thoughts or comments on what Superintendent Gall has shared so far regarding this map? And the pathway programs?
If I can, uh, there was a slide, it was before the one with the lights, that is not in our, you don't, you don't have to look at it. Okay. If this version can be uploaded. I think it listed the current pathways and things and.
Yeah, we added that.
Okay, yeah, so I would be interested in seeing that map again.
We can have them uploaded to, uh, Board Docs. That was a, a late add yesterday, cause I realized that I wanted to make sure that we were communicating that this is not a new idea. The board and the community have already said, these are our entries for pathways.
One question I would have, um, dual language immersion, I love, love, love dual language immersion idea. And, um, do you, are you thinking at all of the second one at this point?
Uh, yes, but I'm not sure everybody will like to know that it's a charter school that's doing dual language immersion in elementary school.
What charter school?
SIVA.
So that's high school though?
No, they cut their high school program, they're all elementary. SIVA, not SIVA.
Oh, SIVA, okay, okay.
Cause again, to build a new program, if I went all the way back to the timeline, I got a planning year, I got a staffing year, and we'll talk about some of the challenges we're having right now in our zero year when we get to the end of the brief. If somebody's already doing dual language in this city and they're doing it well and we have a very rigorous transfer application process through charter schools. If you're doing something that fits into our portfolio and you're doing it well, I think we need to take a hard look at that as compared to saying, let's identify a different one of our schools and go through another three to five to ten year planning process.
And the evidence sometimes to back that up, what you're saying is, when, at least the last year, when Rogers came in front of us and we were talking about the dual language immersion program out there. It's a great program that we invested considerable amount of money in, but it had about ten students, like what you were talking about. Maybe fifteen students between kindergarten and first grade. So it takes time that add validity to it to build a program up to a level where it's sustainable on its own.
Yeah, and, and I know I use, you know, hyperbole and anecdote all the time, but I was at Columbia last week and I said to myself, I, you know, and I know it's zero year, but this is a community that said that they want an art school there. And I'm just expecting to walk down the sidewalk and be going from Mary Poppins, uh, sketch to sketch on the sidewalk. And I'm expecting leftover Halloween papier-mache creatures hanging in the tree limbs. And there's none of that. There's no, I don't, there's no art feeling when you walk into Columbia. And so if we want to deliver, we have to. And so if we want to deliver, we have, and we'll talk about that as 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 some of the next steps. But to your point, we feel that there's a demand signal for dual language immersion. I totally agree that that is a huge opportunities for kids to accelerate their own investment, engagement, and learning over time. There's not a, there's not a scholar out there who's gonna tell you being bilingual is a bad thing. Right, everybody agrees with that, but we don't sell it. We barely tell it, we're not selling it, we're not out there, and we're not doing the completion of the amp. We have to go out there, we need specific marketing campaigns around the schools, which you saw starts right now at Bed Page. But we ought to be having, um I I forget who did our um, who did our um um Hispanic Heritage Awareness Month uh uh resolution?
The students?
Yeah, it, they weren't from Rogers, were they?
No, they were not from Rogers, they, I think one was from Edison, we had three different.
And and to be frank, they were all native Spanish speakers.
Yep.
Right? Maybe we should mingle in there, a child in a dual language program who's learning how to speak Spanish half the day while at Rogers Elementary School. Then you get the excitement of the community that says, wow, there's a kid that just learned how to speak Spanish. Now, it's wonderful, the work that we're doing with our English language learners to teach them English, but that's, that's a different problem to solve.
Thank you.
Um I'm not sure if, I may need some help with this, going back to the programming and the pathways, you know, the slide that we were talking about. Um I'm just curious about how does special ed fit into all of those programmings, right? Because we do have twice exceptional students, students who are diff- so I'm just curious. Because I know that we can elevate the growth in that community as well, but where does it actually fit? And getting them into pathways as well.
Yeah, I'll, I'll let my uh special ed leader comment, but I'll say everywhere and anywhere.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, that has to be the expectation.
Right, absolutely.
None of this is exclusionary, it is inclusionary.
And I, I want you to know, I know it's not exclusionary, because we have people in our districts that have come here from other states because of our special ed programming. So I just wanted to see how that works, based on conversation, not insinuating that you didn't have it. But more or less trying to, you know, discover it in the midst of it all, because we have military, I mean, lots of community members that specifically get, if it's military stationed here. Because they learn ahead of the game, District eleven has a great special ed department, so I was just curious, just asking.
Yeah, I'll just quickly say, I, I think, um I'm really glad that you brought that up. I think uh we can think about programming on that chart, on that um PowerPoint slide that you were looking at. In terms of um our programming for special populations. And special education students are part of that, students that have individual um education plans. And oftentimes, like with the example you gave, they cross categories, right? You can be twice exceptional and be gifted and have a um an IEP um uh based on a learning disability. And so um we do have some tremendous programming for special education students. And we can use our academic master plan and the way we're programming to provide even more opportunities. So within mild moderate, within how we're ser- serving um students that have um the need for more intense services. Um and it can fit by um programming in by area. Uh and, and we can also connect that to um what we've talked about uh having learning lab opportunities. So that it not only serves, um better serves our students and opportunities that they can have. But it also better serves our educators and how they can learn from the things that are going on. Actually, all these things can, that's, that's, you know, um what we're talking about with the portfolio strategy. But I think um there's, there's lots of room within programming for our special populations um within this uh to provide better opportunities. Um and when I say special um populations, I mean special education, culturally linguistically diverse education, which includes language. Um and um and again gifted, um gifted education.
Yeah, absolutely, I think that's why we have the Blue Star Recyclers Program over at Mitchell. For, well, the organization built it based on students with autism, right?
Yes.
So having that incorporated into our programming for the students, and I'm just, you know, I just wanna make sure that we are looking, hearing, which I know we are, but how does it fit with what we're first, second, third year kind of thing?
Absolutely, that's, thank you.
Could you go back a couple of slides, or you don't need to, I can ask the question, did you have a question, Director Nelson? Um when you talked about um the, let me look at the slide, the quality neighborhood schools and the universal programs that are there. And maybe this is a request that is coming, maybe we can clearly define from the district side what the non-negotiables are for a quality neighborhood school. So it looks like there is, even now, there is.
Back Tamara, you have the one with you commented on, I guess.
The various programs that are there, universal programs, PE and visual and performing arts. Some schools have bands, some schools have orchestras, some schools have theater, some schools have music. What is it that we can, or is it up to our principals at that school to decide what a quality neighborhood school is, what is it that we offer? Or is it something that we can provide as a district? This is a non-negotiable, what our expectations are for a quality neighborhood.
Yeah, I, I think it's an open dialogue, um I think when you and I were at North the other day, and I said, why is it that we can't program three thousand dollars per middle school drama club? Because the drama teacher at North came out and said, I have to raise fifteen hundred dollars for each one of these performances. I said, that's unacceptable, I said to Director Mel Packham, I will build into next year's budget three thousand dollars, which is two out of the three performances for every middle school drama club, and then they can fundraise for the third. So there's some skin in the game. That's not that much, that's three times eight or nine, depending upon how you count your middle schools. We ought to be able to handle twenty four, twenty seven thousand dollars to get the joy of what we experienced. And I wanna appreciate Director Odd for always calling out the arts for the number of events that she attends. But I was there with Director, uh President Mel Packham and Director Nelson, and I mean, kids were just, and you were there too, thank you, Director. Kids and parents were following, was that?
I was there too.
Were you there too, and what, same night, or were you there?
Same night, I was hiding.
You were hiding. Well, that's great, how many of us were, but we need, that's a non-negotiable.
Okay.
I think, but I think it falls, I think we have to give some autonomy to the schools to say what it is that they want to be about. But that universal program that says, we are committed to the physical education and to visual performing arts. I would generally think that that's gonna be, we're gonna have a really robust drama club, or we might have a middle school orchestra. I don't know if we have the means to support all of those in all the places. But I think that's also the conversation of, how do I go from a spotlight to a floodlight and make sure I'm capturing those kids? I talk about it all the time, because my, my son's a violinist. Suzuki one through three in Bristol, if you put those kids for a Christmas program onstage at Coronado. Eighty percent of those parents are gonna say, Steve or Sally's going to Coronado, and they're gonna be first violin when they're senior. Cause they're just gonna visualize it. What does that mean at Holmes? I don't know enough about Holmes, I could ask Brandon to comment, do they have a band program at Holmes? Do they have an orchestra, are they related to Coronado? Are they practicing? Are the seniors from Coronado coming down to Holmes to tune instruments for kids? That's how you build a pathway that started with a very specific thing, which was Suzuki one through three. We don't have Suzuki one through twelve, we don't have it, we can't afford it. And I don't even know if that exists, but my point is, I can't get enough of, what's the uh director's name for that? He's like the um, yeah, teacher, Mr. Hanson.
Mr. John, John Hanson, yeah.
John Hanson, right, there's not enough Hanson's out there, but we gotta then pick up that load and take it on.
Just so, just so you know, we did have Suzuki in elementary at Martinez. But the music teacher did, he built a whole district wide program, it was at uh, I think it was Mitchell. I mean, he brought in a famous violinist, they auctioned off a violin, it was amazing. But, you know, we didn't, we weren't able to retain him, basically, so.
So go, go to any, any slide with a map on it, this is a really important point. The, the, the best thing about education is, public education is, everybody is so invested in people. This is a relationships business. The greatest challenge in public education is so many good ideas die as soon as you lose the person. This is, and to, to, particularly the Sanders comment, this is a system. This is a system that says, we will obligate to say that STEM, visual performing arts, experiential and dual language are accessible and attainable within our district. Not that we lost um, it sucked pulling, like, it's horrible that we lost that person.
Yeah, it was, he was uh, he built the whole program, Suzuki after school, people my kids. It was amazing, he literally raffled that off at the uh, it was a district wide thing, and we did not, he moved to a different district.
Right.
He had so much of a problem getting that vision to rise, and uh it just became too much.
Right, so we can't always put it on the backs of our people. Our job as a governance team is to put a structure in place that allows for somebody to be able to move on in their career, or do other things, and then find a way that we continue to deliver that opportunity for kids.
Yeah, there's gotta be some alignment with that, you have so many STEM program schools, I think uh Martinez is a school that has a STEM, used to have a STEM program. Adams is, I was there a few, this, and they have a STEM lab out there, but it's closed, okay, without being used. So what, where was the vision when they built that, and now they're not able to support?
So again, it's a balance between a um, a complete mosaic of having autonomous schools who get to decide whatever they want. Or delivering coherence in the system that meets the specificity of what our students need. And so you should have the opportunity to play with robotics in a non-STEM school.
Yep.
Right? But like, uh, but the way you can nest programs, I was in uh uh Pinellas County when I was in energy management. And they had a national, or they had their district wide uh STEM day. They had elementary school kids who had to build robots that were uh trucks, they had to make the truck go forward and back. Middle school had to make the same truck that could pick up a block and put it in the back of a truck. High school had to build the same truck that could pick up a block, and before it, put it in the back, solve it, cause it was a Rubik's Cube. And so when you put elementary kids involved in a STEM program, seeing that realized as in, wow, six years from now. I'm gonna program that same truck to solve the Rubik's Cube, you had those kids, you had those kids forever. That's the coherence we wanna bring into the system. And I wanna close, schools saying, play with robotics, play with robotics. I don't wanna say you can't do arts, cause you're not an art school. When you, again, when you walk into Columbia, you ought to be like stepping into those chalk drawings from Mary Poppins. So you don't want to be my only Mary Poppins fan?
That, that, that's on a follow up question on that. It is a school that is supposed to be an arts pathway school next year, Columbia is. And so uh other schools that have been identified last year, so if that's not popping out out there.
We have a slide for it.
Right, so you are going to make sure that, okay, good.
We're gonna talk about that.
So that, I cut, one more thing I would say, that gifted magnet program, there is a significant opportunity here to tap into that. We have students at Chiquita, when I talked to the principal out there last year. She said a hundred students out there are identified tagged approximately as gifted magnet students. But when they leave that Chiquita pathway, they go to another school district. Because they don't see a pathway for that in our school district right now. Where we can keep those, at least ninety percent of the kids going down that pathway, to a middle school. So there is an opportunity there that we can explore and we need to.
We're ready to explore it with you.
Okay, perfect, go ahead.
Um just circle back on your question about definition of a quality neighborhood school. Did I see a slide that said we will identify that by next March? Was that that in the timeline?
Uh yeah, I thought I saw, but maybe.
Sure.
Okay.
We'll sit down with you, we'll make recommendations, and you all can vote on the level of specificity on those deliverables. Um for me, you know, it's.
I thought I saw March, but maybe it was something else that it was referring to.
Oh, that was, that was the slide in the March update, like.
Oh, that was the March update from twenty twenty two.
Oh, it is, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
That was your last update, that you had on hand.
Oh.
That was, yes.
Okay.
Prior to um the new uh.
Yeah.
So, so you just circle back to us then, on when you think you can have some uh dates of when we come together and discuss, here's what we want quality neighborhoods.
We'll bring it to you in February, cause I mean, it's, it's there, we'll just put it with more specificity.
Okay.
Right, 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 the, you know, I'll, I'll just, well, I'll schedule a meeting and we'll talk about it, yeah.
Except that was it, I'm sorry, I wasn't done.
The last, go ahead.
Um on that programming also, timing for the different programming things, like some schools already have Avid, but dyslexia, you know, that's the one I.
Yeah, and so that, those are likely gonna be handled as in um, as they bubble up. You know, you saw the dyslexia memo that Tamara put out, um and we have a plan for that. And, but it's going to take time, if you read through that, it's not, it's gonna be solved in a couple of months. The amount of training and resources that we have to provide to ensure that we have it, but it's built under this same model. Which is, you should have access to very strong dyslexia programming. If your child has that level of need in each quadrant of the city.
Right.
Now, you should have regular dyslexia support. But when, and and we, I certainly get a lot of feedback from Harvard families, that there is a really strong demand for very strong dyslexia programming. We need to meet that demand, we can't just tell people, well, we decided it's not at Harvard, if that's where the demand is, we need to be able to shift our resources there.
You had, so you had, you know, twenty two, twenty three, twenty three, twenty four, twenty four, twenty five, here's where we're gonna be, like CTE and all of that. So if we could get that kind of a timeline for some of these programming? Cause I agree, it's gonna take time to do dyslexia, just give me an idea of what you're thinking, when it will. And I'm just using dyslexia as an example.
Yep, we'll take, we'll, we'll reduce that list into just a more, a couple more general areas, so we're not tracking twelve different programs.
Yeah.
Yeah, would it make sense, cause this, that gives the full breadth of what could be offered, so we're not gonna be hyper focusing on each one of those.
Yeah.
We'll be continuing programs and then building out others where they need to be built out. I think like, I, just to circle back briefly to the quality neighborhood schools, um having more detail, like really, uh the, the detail that was, that's been built from previous work that we've lived in the visual um with the foundations and what we're doing, best first instruction is part of that, everything that we've gone over. That's what we started with, like our strategic plan and our major improvement strategy in best first instruction. Those are the details of what are foundational in every school for best first instruction. And we'll continue to um, to grow with that over time. The programs, back to um, I think your question also, President Mel Packham, um about what's universal there. That was, there was also work that had been done, that was probably connected to the March update. And so when we talked visual and performing arts, what we would want to see universally everywhere um from past conversations was music and art, generally speaking, across the board, right? And so like the other examples, and we can talk and adjust, um because there may be some swaps by area. And I know there was some good thinking there, right, because dance can also go with um, within physical education. Theater can also go within humanities, like exposure too for interests and that sort of thing. Um but uh we can, as we're um rolling out how to implement that um level of detail will also go to our communication with schools, and we get connected to budgeting process and that sort of thing.
I just had another thought, so I know Superintendent Gall mentioned a couple of times about extending the school year. Or maybe add more times, there's an option for maybe having the opening for night, right?
Mm-hmm.
Perhaps some students would do a module between seven thirty and one. Then you can have students from like one to eight or something like that, perhaps we can consider opening it up that way, and just.
I, I, I got a lot of ideas on what I call high demand, low availability.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um the limitation we'll have with that is, is uh, but uh we can create, we can create solutions for that.
So one other option that I would throw out there, whether that's a pathway school or a programming school. There is a, and tagging on what Nikki Myers was talking about, niche school, ni- niche school, how would you say? Classical academies, they have a pathway, there is a demand for some core knowledge instruction type of.
That's right.
There is a waiting list for students at TCA, and it's been like that where you have to enroll your student after you're born. They're like when, you know, you're zero, to get them in.
And so, and so as we, and so we were very specific to use the phraseology, portfolio strategy to complete that vision. And so I, we could create an innovation school that is District eleven completely run, that delivers on the classical academy approach. It will take us a very long time to do that. We will have tons of internal obstacles, or we could look at. Or we could look at existing classical academies that are serving hundreds of kids well and determine whether or not we want them to be part of the portfolio. I am hearing that there's a lot of angst in the community. I think the community will be responsive to the vision that we set, instead of us being fearful of it. And when I met Glenn the first time, Glenn said to me, he goes, I didn't think I'd ever get there, but I think you're right. It's time for us to stop dying a death of a thousand cuts and start thinking more holistically about the way families are choosing their schools. Instead of chasing the market, why don't we buy some of the market? So I think that's just the strategy I have there. Um, okay, MT two four, uh, we've talked just a little bit about this. I think it would be really interesting if we could identify kids by the ninth or tenth grade that says, what do you want to do after high school? And then make sure we are counseling and supporting and delivering on the D eleven graduate vision for them as we move them along this version of a high school pathway. Go ahead. And then just continuing on the D eleven graduate, next slide, I'll let Tamara talk to this, because she's got better eyesight than I do.
Yeah, this is greatly, I, so, so as part of that vision, right, giving all students opportunities to have, um, to develop their interests um, in a quality neighborhood school or a pathway. But how do you put that information together so they can actually realize the mission to impact the world and realize our mission of, um, what a D eleven graduate is, um, connected to all the work that happened with the graduate profile? Um, one of the way, the way in which the lever that we see in being able to do that is through our, um, D eleven ICAP. There's been work that's happened on that. It's, um, stands for the Individual Career and Academic Plan. So by grade level, six through twelve, um, we have identified areas and that's what this shows right now of currently what our D eleven plan is for that, of what is focused on, um, uh, by grade level in that development of a plan. And, um, and then you can see the work that's been done, um, and to the, um, different attributes of a graduate. Some very thoughtful work, um, that's been done, uh, done there, um, again, with, um, uh, Sherry, um, uh, callback. Um, and, um, Nepal Atmer, Atmer also did a lot of really good work, a lot of in community engagement to develop those attributes. Um, and then if you look at what we're wanting to do is so like, how do you make the more, um, conceptual with those attributes concrete? How do we really realize those attributes? So we have the individual career plans and what they do by grade level. This just shows you some work, um, initial work that's been done of how do you align those, um, surveys and assessments that are done by grade level with the profile, so you know specifically what, what attributes am I working on year by year, grade by grade? Um, so this is not the end, this shows you one way to do it. I think, um, we'll go back and look at specifically, what are the ICAPS? Um, digging into what are the ICAPS doing at each grade level? Do we need to make adjustments to them six through twelve? And then what actually, because, um, this journey starts in elementary school. So what should be happening, what, what's the version of what should happen in, in terms of an ICAP in elementary school? Um, this is also very connected, you see at the bottom of the slide, to the gra- our graduation requirements and on track to graduate. Um, and to that end, um, we are working on, and I'm looking at Scott, who's, um, been, uh, working on this as well with teams, um, in our high school, um, folks, but a multi-tiered system of supports, um, and a really good way to track, um, to track that our students are, um, realizing, um, those attributes. We're not there. Um, we need better progress monitoring systems, um, we need, we need to complete this work with ICAP. We need to align it with the, um, attributes. Um, and then we need to, um, make sure that, uh, it's connected to state competencies. Um, so those pieces, uh, we're, we're starting that work, um, we're continuing that work and actually starting some of it now, um, that hasn't been started, uh.
I think it's important to highlight that we recognize we have a lot of work to do on MTSS and on track to graduate. We build pathways and or opportunities for students, but our guardrails or our triggers are not where they need to be. I've given these examples before, but I'll use them again. I can't have a kid in eleventh grade who has all Fs in ninth and tenth grade and says they're in eleventh grade and be in algebra two in eleventh grade when they had an F in algebra in ninth grade. We have to hold ourselves to a different way that we evaluate and we move kids along through the system. I understand that kids can recover credits, but we want kids to be engaged in the process and not wondering why is that an expulsion package in the eleventh grade? Clearly, there were challenges for this student over a long period of time. Last week, I did a force placement to not, and, and, and as a deferred expulsion for a thirteen-year-old in middle school who was being expelled for being habitually disruptive. If you look at the write-ups, this individual would not take their earbuds out when an adult told him to. This individual would not put their cellphone away when another person told him to. This individual, my child, would not clear their plate after dinner when I said clear your plate or empty the dishwasher. I don't get to expel my kid because they didn't follow what I told them to do. Yes, we expel kids when they make egregious actions of which the general safety of our population is a threat. We cannot expel thirteen-year-old kids and think that they're going to be successful. We have to have multi-tiered systems of support and measures to understand, and if you look at this young girl's track record, there were many opportunities for us to be engaged with SSW and SSE to figure out how to create a better solution for the child. Is the child ultimately accountable for those actions? Absolutely. She is on a deferred expulsion. And when I placed her in the middle school and went there that day, the guidance counselor said, well, you have a fresh start here. And I said, no, 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 this is not a fresh start. This is a deferred expulsion. And this young woman knows it, because her and I have been eye to eye a couple of times, and said, no more horsing around. I get it that earbuds rules are stupid, but they're there for a reason. And I need you to conform to the basic way that our school needs to work. And I get a report every week now, two weeks in a row, she's doing well. That's what we need to be able to deliver. Not me chasing that down, and I'm not a hero for that. I just can't sign on a bottom line that says, good luck thirteen-year-old, have a great time on the streets. I live downtown. There are more homeless people, the colder it gets, there are more homeless people on the streets. I don't understand it. It's completely counterintuitive. I spent two hundred dollars on a dinner on Saturday night. I had to step over somebody to go into an establishment to spend two hundred dollars. We, and so we are potentially products of that problem if we don't make sure that all our kids are getting to graduation and getting there with the skills that they need, MT two four, whatever you want to call it, to be productive members of our community and have a pathway of the middle class and beyond. We will dive deep into this over the next couple of years, um, and it's gonna be a lot of work. It's gonna be a lot of work for us to think about how it is we identify kids early and give them the resources that we give, that they need.
And I think that the ideal, and I know the ideal state would be that, um, we have teams supporting students, doing that, um, at each grade round level, um, with our individual career and academic plan. Um, right now, it's, uh, generally speaking, mostly a counselor type function. Um, and it, it really needs to be a more of a, a team effort connected to that multi-tiered support.
Let's get to the last couple of slides and get to some Q and A.
Oh, I'll just say, like, really privately, like, well, we also have scheduled, um, on board time to go deeper into the graduate, um, profile and and we've talked about that, so more to come there.
Okay, that's back to the timeline, build in the animation, just because I think we, did we change the slide that we added? We just wanted to make it clear that we were gonna tackle this idea of on track to graduate and making CTE more actionable in that second year. So, otherwise that stands the same. Uh, if you go to the pathway piece here, the only thing I wanted to highlight here and where we are in our zero planning, the work's going well. Um, I'm very happy with the, uh, partners that we have picked, um, A plus and others to be able to deliver on this. But I do want to make sure that as we make decisions about specific pathways, that we consider the leaders that we are putting this on. And so again, an art school ought to just be that person that when you see him in a hallway, you say, Laurlee Mc, uh, Mc,
Dan.
No, I'm gonna get it, McDaniel. I have this little thing in my head. I always want to say McKnight, but D comes before K, so I know it's McDaniel, it's not McKnight. When you see Laurlee, you say that's somebody that loves the arts. We want to have an arts pathway school. We want to have language immersion schools. We want to have STEM schools. I need that expertise as close to that school as possible. We are tight on best first instruction and we are distributing that to school. I need the pathways to own that relationship. I'll run out of people if I have to do every one of those things here in central office. We need to be selecting leaders for schools that just, this is their life's vision. They're just like, I can't believe it's gonna happen. I finally get the chance to lead a pathway school. That's what we need. That's what we want to make sure that we're doing as we go forward. Um, we'll get all the training we need for the folks that we have right now, but when we're making these hard decisions about programs and about pathways, we need to think about the place that that lands. I'll use my, my food analogy. Every time I want something to eat when I'm in town, I want a food truck, I want a hyper-specific solution. I can't, like, I just can't wait to try another new restaurant. Every time I get on the highway, I just want Cracker Barrel or Chick-fil-A. It's really simple, because it's the same wherever I am. We have the chance to get really unique relationships and opportunities for kids by being hyper-specific to somebody who says, I'm all in on shrimp tacos, I'm gonna put my livelihood into a truck on it. That's the type of person you want leading a pathway school. The person who makes that bet that says shrimp tacos is gonna get me there. Not the person who says, welcome to Cracker Barrel.
This slide is just nice too, because it shows that, you know, right now, the work that's happening with district supports, partner supports, what we're tracking for implementation, um, with Dr. Comfort, um, Nepal Atmer, Carol Gates, and, um, the CNI team, um, all doing a lot of work to support schools, um, in year zero.
Yep. And?
The end.
The end. We need an end slide.
Oops, and I just messed something up. That's all I'm sorry.
Can you bring it back up in case we want to go backwards? Thank you, Marisol.
Okay. So I will quickly reference the last conversation, last slide that you referenced, kind of what you talked about having a specific leader in a pathway school. I'm not gonna ask you if we have that right now, but at least hopefully we can provide the supports that those leaders need in those identified
Yes.
schools, so they are ready for August of twenty twenty-three.
That's correct.
Perfect. Director.
Um, on the last slide, partner supports for summer academy learning, professional learning and conferences. Summer academy learning, is that for the students? It.
Uh, can you get to the last slide?
Yeah, I'm sure, and yeah, I'm, I'm afraid I'm gonna overshoot it, so I'm
It is the last one, like.
I'm a little tired too, sorry.
I believe that is for the teams that are building the pathway schools, it's not, um, for students, but I have some interesting summer programs I'd love to, uh, talk about, just not today.
Go.
Yeah, almost.
I think one more. Yeah. Uh, the partner supports, summer academy learning, I think. Is that what you're referencing?
Coach. The mill. The mill.
Dr. Comfort, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we, we are, uh, engaging in ongoing professional development. In fact, just this morning, we had a three-hour work session with all of our pathway principals, where we were leading them through some change management training, uh, working on job description, some of those types of things. Uh, starting in January, they will start embedding their pathway PD with the BFI PD, uh, with their staff, but really the large bulk of their professional development, uh, that will happen related to the pathway is going to be in the, the summer academies. Because that's when the consultants are available, that's when we can get all of the staff together in a really kind of cool retreat-type setting and dig really deep into the learning.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions? And, uh, I didn't get any, anything on my phone from Jason, Director Jorgensen or Director Loma, if. If you guys are listening and you want to make a comment or have a question, let me know.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, go ahead, Director Jorgensen.
Sorry, I have a crying baby in the background. Um, I really love everything I, just so you see my face. I really love everything I just saw here. Um, it's doing things that have been around education for years and actually putting it together. You could use it for the good of what it was intended for. And giving kids a pathway forward and showing a way to, to do it. Wow, geez, the good bit. Um, and then I love the profile piece. I'm very, um, I'm excited to circle back into that and to tag financial literacy on it there, to make that graduate profile even more robust. Um, and then the case is awesome. So, um, just, I'm a little worked and I can't wait to see this operationalized and, and, um, working out the things along the way. So thank you very much.
Okay, I think that's on, uh, uh, Ms. Asavado's, uh, list, the graduate profile that you're talking about, financial literacy. At some point in time, she will circle back to the board on that.
It's on the schedule.
Okay. Any other thoughts or questions on what Superintendent Gall has shared with us? I think this is exciting, but that's kind of what, uh, the universal feedback is and we are excited to roll this and see how this, um, plays out in the district. So if at some point in time the request that were made, I think you captured it, uh, but if we can have a definition, February or whatever, you said neighborhood schools. I would like to see a more specific programming for GT magnet schools and, um, other programming things that we talk about, I think Director Nelson. Any other thoughts or comments before we wrap it up? I appreciate all the work that you and your team has put into this.
It's a lot of work, but it's a good chance for us to come together and again, bring all these separate bodies of work into one vision, which was the AMP that the community had asked for, you know, um, some time ago. And so this is the, the way forward for our combined work, for Superintendent.
And like what you talked about, we got to be selling this and, uh, not telling it, is that how you frame this?
Yes.
Yeah, so, yeah, thank you.
I was selling middle, uh, primary years, uh, program ID at steel last night.
There you go. It's very exciting. Thank you.
Okay, uh, with that, we are at the end of, uh, um, end of today's work session. Um, just to give the board a little bit of update uh, on what is coming up, uh, soon after Thanksgiving break, on, uh, November thirtieth, we will have a special meeting that day. It's not a regular board meeting, so it will not have all the bells and whistles that come with a regular board meeting. It's going to be, uh, hyper-focused on what the action or non-action items that are coming up. We will have executive session that day to talk about, um, uh, talk about IPB. I think our, uh, uh, legal counsel may be there, uh, Director Bailey assessed for this, so, uh, she will be there, Chief Bailey. She's, uh, she will be there, so we will, and, uh, I think Director Art, you also asked, I don't know the training, that may, I've talked to Chief Bailey, that you wanted to bring that outside. That may happen in January. I think, um, we, yeah. Uh, the person that used to do that federal, is it a mediator?
Kayla Mack.
She is not there anymore. Kayla Mack was the person, we have a new one. So Chief Bailey is working with him and trying to see if we can circle back in January sometime to have that training that you asked for at that time. But we will have executive session that day with legal counsel and, um, from administration to provide some feedback. Before, um, uh, the district starts that process with, um, uh, our employee groups out there. Um, we also will have, uh, the last two schools that we will hear that day, uh, Tendrils and Twain. And, uh, we will also have, I think, uh, a URA, that's the Urban Renewal Project, that's coming as a non-action item in front of the board at that time. Uh, but those are two specific items as a special, uh, meeting. Uh, I'm not sure, we will have to talk to you and see if that mill levy authorization, which, um, um, the mill, mill levy, the board has to do, the inflation that reaches, if.
The Inflationary Initiative is supposed to come on the thirtieth?
Yeah.
For non-action.
Okay, that's fine. So that's another item that will come as a non-action and then December fourteenth.
Non-action, yes, sir.
December fourteenth as action. So that's what we have for, uh, November thirtieth, executive session, starting at four o'clock. Director Jorgensen, are you still here? Okay.
Yes.
You had sent me a text asking about that, um, day and you wanted to. You had sent me a text asking about that um day and you wanted to would you clarify what your ask was?
For the survey?
Yes. And I.
Yeah, I. It's I mean, it's just on me, I'm traveling back from Florida on that day and our flight's at eight twenty Eastern time, which is six twenty home time. So I'll be able to make, you know, any of the earlier things I'll be able to make. So if we start with an exec session at three, that gives me a solid three hours to to be with the board. You know, while one day check in for air or not that, but I'll I'll put my headphones on and I'll be present.
Okay. I I think what I gathered from Director Jorgensen is is there uh the board willing to start that day the meeting at three o'clock as opposed to four o'clock, which is what it's scheduled at right now. But if the collective board says that's okay, then we can start it at three o'clock with executive session and we will be done a little earlier, okay?
Did you say the thirtieth?
Thirtieth, which will be a Wednesday again. So is that I I have to.
If not, that's just clarify, if not, that's fine.
I'll be late.
Okay.
I just I'll be getting on a plane at at six P M our own time, and I'll have to drop off.
Okay, we can talk about that right now. I have to, it's originally scheduled at uh four P M our time and I'll have to stick with that, Director Jorgensen, unless there is.
That's great.
Okay, great. So that's what we have for November thirtieth. Okay, thank you guys. With that, I wish you all a happy Thanksgiving and I hope I mean to the board too that I'm talking. We've had several meetings and some of these meetings are four, five hours long. I appreciate the diligence that the board puts into this, the quest, the thoughtful questions and feedback that you provide to Superintendent Gaul and this team. I hope you would take the next week off, even though you will probably have some preparation material in your um um in your inboxes. I think we already have six school improvement plans that are in there. If you have time, please look at that. We may also get two charter school applications to just review those charter school applications. And when it comes, it may be late December or is it middle of December or early January that those charter. Okay, but it will the application packet, the what those charter schools submitted to us would be forwarded to you.
Yeah, and that you'll be good.
Yeah, I I'm reviewing them with Scott and then we'll get them to you.
Perfectly, okay. So then the board has some time to review them before it comes as a non-action in front of the board. We will have enough time and this will happen even over the Christmas break. We will have enough time to provide thoughtful feedback uh to those charter schools, okay?
Will Dak have reviewed both of them?
Yes.
Yes, okay, there you go. Okay, thank you guys. With that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Gabby.
Thanks.
The meeting is adjourned.